This conference will now be recorded.
Call this meeting over. Roll call Shannon.
Commissioner Higa.
Here.
Mr. Gandy.
Here.
Mr. Bowles.
Here.
Mr. Butcher.
Here.
Commissioner White, here.
Commissioner, Commissioner Butcher will lead us in prayer and place.
You can all bow your heads please. Our heavenly Father, Lord, we want to thank you for letting us all wake up and sing this beautiful day. Oh, we just ask that you bless those people in Ukraine and their families. And Lord, we ask that you bless this city, these commissioners, and the ones that's coming in. Lord, we just ask that you continue to guide this city and take it forward in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of America, with which it stands, one nation, under God, in this world, with which there is peace and harmony. I salute the flag, the state of New Mexico, the city of San Antonio, a perfect country.
Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Sure. Motion was made by Commissioner, the anti-second by Commissioner Bowles. Is there any questions? No questions. Roll call Shannon.
Mr. Gandy.
Yes.
Mr. Butcher.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Commissioner Higa.
Yes. Do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for consideration of events February 28th, 2022.
Second that. Motion was made by Commissioner Gandy, second by Commissioner Butcher. Is there any discussion on the minutes? There's no discussion on the minutes. Roll call Shannon.
Mr. Butcher.
Yes.
Mr. Gandy.
Yes.
Mr. Bowles.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Yes. State Representative Brandon.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak in front of y'all today. During the 30-day session, we, when I say we, the House Republicans, took an opportunity to have multiple debates amongst ourselves about how we could best show our appreciation for our law enforcement agencies. During the 30-day session, we were limited to some of the things that we could do, so we chose to do it by House Memorial. And Mr. Mayor and Commissioners wanted to talk a little bit about why this was so important to us. Over the last several years, we've heard nothing but defund the police from the far left. And the reality is, we should be doing everything that we can to show that our law enforcement, we don't have their back, we're in front of them. We protect them the way that they protect us. And so over the last couple of years, our progressive left in this state has taken aim at our law enforcement. They passed the Civil Rights Act. The attempt was to make our individual police officers accountable for split-second decisions. The people, nothing against my friend Patrick here, get months, if not years, to analyze. We were blessed, and we're blessed with the ability to change that, and at least we got, kept the punishment from being individualized and kept it at the municipal or the county or the state level with respect to that. This year, our friends on the left are trying to do a whole bunch of things with respect to weak legislation that was designed to help our law enforcement. When in reality, if you look at the depth of those bills, we gave more power to the criminals as we continued forward. And so, we talked about this, and I'm not going to read the whole memorial, but there are a couple of things in here that I think are important. Whereas law enforcement officers face dangerous and difficult situations to protect their communities. And whereas law enforcement officers may experience physical and mental health issues during the course of their service. Whereas law enforcement agents, agencies are lacking in resources that will perform their job duties. And whereas in recent years, law enforcement officers have not been shown the respect that they deserve, resulting in a law enforcement officer shortage across the state. This is a heartfelt thing from, at least from the House Republicans. There's 24 signature comments, and that's every House Republican. Just to say thank you for what you do for protecting our community. It's not enough. This year, we tried to ensure that our law enforcement protection fund was protected. We didn't quite get there. Trust me, we'll get there next year. So with that, I would like to present this to you. Thank you very much for what you do for the city.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Keep moving on to Commissioner and Stanley's words, Shannon.
Yes, my place in the B's at your stations over there, that is the campus of the Elevation Health. And those meetings before the county commission on the 10th, and they did certify them, so they've been sent to the secretary's state office. And these are the results. That presented, you may have total of 309 votes.
Is there any questions about the vote?
Just wondered if Judge and husband voted absentee.
I can't hear that well anymore.
It was a Snyder vote. I was accusing you of that, voting absentee.
Thank you, Shannon. Ms. Kennedy?
Nothing at this time.
Board of Assembly, thank you for listening. Thank you. Chief Miranda?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, the city manager has authorized my department to make two conditional offers to new officers, one certified, one non-certified. We've had three officers wash out through the selection process, so we're hoping to add two new officers, one certified, better soon. We've been working on the budget. Preliminary budget is showing us at the current time $285,000 less than last year's reduced budget. We would hopefully, once the budgetary dust settles, use those funds for a total of four new officers through the remainder of this year. Even though a certified officer only takes home $41,875 a year, the cost of the city is $72,000 for an officer. So four new officers would about equal what we've saved in our budget from last year.
Thank you. Chief Miranda. Is there any questions for Chief Miranda? Thank you, sir. Chief?
Mayor, Commissioners, just want to give you an update. We do have, hopefully, doing a new hire testing this next week. Right now, we're waiting on two more applications to come in sometime this week, but that should put us about five employee, or five potential employees to test out. So hopefully, we can get some good candidates out of it. That's all I have, sir.
You're referring to the three, right?
Three, four positions.
Oh, yeah, one lost, and then the three that we broke this out.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Is there any questions about the vote?
Yes.
I just wondered how we come out of the seniors and the doors and the next every place.
Actually, Mayor, Commissioners, I have not.
It's the Dr. Martinez.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I, yeah, I didn't transition back.
Okay.
Dr. Martinez.
I'll wait until I get mine.
Okay. Is there any other questions, first? Chief Lozaro. No questions for Chief Lozaro, Commissioner Bowles.
Okay, first, and I can say again, as I'm probably going to say every meeting, people get out and shop local. It helps out the community, helps out the businesses. I can't reiterate it enough, it's very important that people get out there and help our businesses out. I appreciate that, all that businesses do. Thank you very much. A couple of questions. Is, or is, how's the seniors coming?
I did meet with the director. She indicated that there was specific money capital outlay for the doors. Now, she did mention that we're looking about $58,000, so I'm working with her to find out specifically where that money is going to come from. Now, if it's capital outlay, there's going to be a specific process that I need to follow. So I will give you an extended report at the next commission meeting. We have a budget hearing with her on, this week.
I think it's tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning. So once I get additional information, I'll report to the board.
I have another question.
Yes, sir.
No one could ask, how's our audit coming along there? They seem that, looking to our finances, we paid another $58,000 and wondering where we're at, as far as with the audit, and paying the people who need the audit.
I know, Ms. Kennedy, you did meet with one of the auditors the other day, correct?
Yes, I have ongoing communications with Ed Piero, and that's the expense you were talking about.
Yes.
But I'll, I will address that in the financial report, where we're coming on that and what the specifics are.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bowles? Bernard? Mr. Gandy?
So, Chief, we've been discussing the LCCA.
Yes, sir.
Phone. So so a person who lives in my house had a situation recently, and due to the urgency, she didn't think she needed to call 1-911, so I prompted her to try to use the 2811. But then after rethinking the situation of inappropriate actions by this person, I think sometimes we really need to think about citizens probably just need to call 911.
Yes, sir.
And then let the dispatch figure that out. And just, just having the conversation here, because that's where, I think it was with her, because she got so frustrated with all the call letters, and she thought it was urgent enough, but she didn't think it was 911. But I really think that probably 90% of the phone calls, just after having several experiences, call 911, let them figure that out, and send you where it'd be. I mean, it does overload their system, but there's really not a good way around that at the moment.
I think that there's any doubt at all on someone's in an emotional state like that, just dial 911 and those sort of apps.
Right. So.
I just can't officially say dial 911 for everything.
Right.
It's really meant for emergencies.
It is emergencies, but you know, in certain situations, it's hard to distinguish what, what one person would consider emergency and the other person wouldn't.
Absolutely. Everybody's definition of an emergency is different, and at the time, that sometimes that immediacy, you need to talk to someone within seven seconds.
Right. So, you know, they probably need to rethink, like, if you're wanting records and different things like that, yeah, the system works fine, but in that situation where it's a gray area, I would say they might want to lean that way towards the 911 instead of trying to go around the other route, so.
Yes, sir. Agreed.
But.
I agree, that may be the first option. I guess that's what you could get at, right?
Yeah.
If, if all the options, maybe that'll be the first option. Well, if there's any doubt at all on anyone's mind, call 911. We just don't want people using 911.
Right. But it's, you know, the way the system's set up, it really wasn't an emergency, but yet, in the same token, it should be taken that way, so.
Especially if you need an officer.
Yes. So, and 911 is probably the best way to go, and try to get out of the habit of 2811, and just use that for records and different things like that, so.
Yes, sir.
But, no, that was just another wonderful situation we dealt with, so. But other than that, I had none.
Thank you. Jaylen?
Yeah, yes, sir. Mayor, Commissioners, just an update on the Key Club community project. I talked to Edith Taylor. They didn't make it out this last Saturday because of the weather, but they're expected to be out there every Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00 to do some painting. They're, she's working with some community members like Dan Kimbrough and others to get more community involvement, but they should be out there every Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00. So if anybody wants to go out and help, they can join them. And that's all I have tonight.
Nothing to elaborate on what you talked about. They, they've installed lots and so forth, or two bathrooms, and they're going to hopefully have them completely fully new installations by, by April, when that's to go. And incident picture the other day, Bernard, leading the director for Bernard, been leading the charge on that. They will be ready for the, for the children to come April 1.
Dr. Martinez?
Mr. Mayor, Commission, you should have a copy of the tentative organizational chart. Now, what I did, this is a tentative organizational chart. What I mean by that, that if we need to make changes, we will make changes. Now, if you look at the, if you look at it, there's three specific categories. The first category is administrative, and you have your city clerk, your finance director, fire chief, city police, and planning and zoning. The reason why they're classified as administrative is they're required to be at commission meetings. And then in the middle, you have your executive team, and the reason why we use the word executive is because each supervisor has the authority to act. So we have animal control, coenforcement, motor vehicle department, senior center, live working, and then the theater youth center. And then we have the public works, which is streets, solid waste, parking wreck, water, runwoods, and wastewater. And so you have the three divisions. What I plan to do is have at least once or twice a month, meet with all supervisors. So we look at this list, it's a total of 13, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13. That would answer directly to me, including Jaylen. So again, we may have one or two monthly meetings with the entire team, or depending on the situation, for example, I met with just public works, or if I meet with just administration. So again, this is the tentative organizational chart. At this time, if you have any comments or suggestions. Want to say that Dr. Martinez did reduce his staff from 20 to 13, because there was 20 in attending, attendance to the, our, our staff meetings. He's reduced it down to 13.
All right. Any questions? Any questions about the vote?
Now, as I, of course, sir.
Oh, no.
Okay. Now, I've been meeting with different departments, and so I was at the water waste. I've been to the convenience center and so forth. And one thing I noticed as I go around and look at city property, I hate to use the word junk, but it's junk. We have a lot of broken-down city vehicles. We have equipment that's, that is not being used. So we plan to have an auction. Now, I want to thank the fire chief for assisting in this process. So the first thing that we're going to do is each supervisor is going to identify any vehicles or any equipment that is, is not being used, it's not working anymore. So, once they, they will give the chief a list by the 24th, correct?
Yes.
Now, once we have a list of everything that we want to take off inventory, take off our, our list of equipment, that will have to come to commission. And so we will bring that to the commission, and I asked the chief to have a list of everything that we want to take off our inventory. Now, once the commission approves that, then the next step is we must submit the list to our state auditor. The state auditor has to approve that. So I don't know if that's going to take a month or two months, but I will definitely, once the commission approves the list, we'll send it to the state auditor, and I'll make sure that they respond in a reasonable time to the city of Lovington. I don't want us to submit that list to the state, and they sit on it for eight, nine months. So I'll make sure that that is, we move on that. Now, once the state auditor approves the list, then we need to decide on, if we're going to have it here in Lovington, we will have to hire someone to come in and do the actual auction for us. Now, we have several options. We're working with the gentleman out of Hobbs, and so we're looking at Hobbs or bringing somebody in to do that auction for us. So at this time, if you've got any questions or comments with the auction.
Centered to the auction.
Okay. We started our budget hearings. Today was the first day. We met with fire chief for about three hours. We met with the police department for about two hours. So all this week, we meet from 8:00 to 12:00, and if we meet the afternoon. So we're meeting with every department. Ms. Kennedy has created a list, so tomorrow morning, we meet with planning and zoning, and animal, and coenforcement. So we will meet with every department, budget hearings for the two weeks, and if we have to meet again with each department, we will do that. We have a, a, a report that is due to DFA pretty soon, so we will be, that is going to be our priority, is the budget. So we will continue to, to meet with the departments, and Ms. Kennedy, in her financial report, will give a little bit more information on that. But I just want to let the mayor and the commission know that we started that process today. Okay? The convenience center, the, I did meet with county manager, and I did meet with planning and zoning supervisor. We did hire a surveyor, and we're going to split the property, because we have baseball fields. So we're going to split the property, and once that occurs, then I'll meet with the county, and we'll start that transition to, to count the city property to the county. So we'll be working on that process, and I'll continue to collaborate with this, with county manager on that. Okay? Any questions with that? Capital Outlay Projects. We have $200,000 to renovate City Hall. I'm going to start that process. I want to make sure that we add additional security at our facility here, cameras, and we have to upgrade our IT. So the first step for the $200,000, I have to develop a scope of work, go through the CES contract, and hire our tech to do that process. Since it's capital A, I'm going to have to follow state procurement guidelines, so I will start that. I want to move as quickly as possible so that we can spend that money and we can renovate this facility. Now, I don't know if, how that's going to affect us. We may have to have meetings somewhere else. I don't know yet. But I think it's critical that we provide the proper security of this facility and update our, our infrastructure in respect to IT. I will continue to work with the county on the Veterans Memorial. We have $600,000 to allocate. I know we've spent some of that money. But I have a meeting with the Mike Gallagher, county manager, and some of the county commissioners. I just want to make sure that we move forward and allocate the $600,000 for the Veterans Memorial. In respect to the animal shelter, we have $150,000. Now, we have, I've met with Ms. Laura, and we're, the, the capital outlay language states for a new facility, and obviously, $150,000 will not be enough to, to build a new facility. So we may have to reauthorize that funding so that we can renovate the existing building. But I'll continue to meet with her, and we'll look at additional resources. But I definitely want to, to move on the $150,000. The theater, working with, with Main Street, we have approximately $250,000 for the theater, and what we're going to use that money for is we're going to fix the marquee. That will be the first step. Now, Main Street has already moved on this. We had a meeting with Mr. Hubert Quintana from the COF, from Southwest Economic Development. And so I will continue to, to work with the Main Street so that we can utilize that $250,000. Now, keep in mind, the capital outlay, that's money coming from the state. That's not coming from our general fund. That's, that's the main reason why we're moving on, on these projects. It's not general fund money. $65,000 for, for defense, for the police department. I met with the chief earlier, and we will make sure that that gets taken care of, and we can spend that money and, and build defense around the police department. We have an additional $150,000 to renovate our, our old water department facility, and we received about $434,000 for the Main Street project. So those are the capital outlay projects right now.
More questions?
Approximately $434,000. I'll get the exact figure for Main Street. We do have some COVID recovery funds. Right now, I'm working with Ms. Kennedy to identify if that money is still available, or if that was used for general fund. So we're still working that out to make sure that that money is there. Now, what we plan to do is we will purchase a new ambulance, commit with the fire department. Keep in mind, ambulances are expensive. We're looking about $250,000 for an ambulance. So we're looking at purchasing a new ambulance, four police vehicles for the police department. I did meet with the water department, so we need water and sewage pumps. We need to work on our lift stations, and so that is being addressed. And for public works, we're looking at heavy equipment, Bobcat, and so forth, just general heavy equipment. Now, I did meet with, with the director of public works, so he does have certain equipment that he wants, so we just need to identify what are those. So once we identify if that recovery money is there, we're looking about spending about a million dollars for, for the needed, for public safety and public works.
And that will be in the budget, right? As a line item in the budget.
Correct. That will be recovery funds. Yes.
Yes, sir.
The CDVG, that's a community development block grant. It's a grant that we can apply for, and it's up, it's between $750,000 to $1 million for a road project. And this would be funds coming out of HUD. So what we need to do is prepare the application. It's a very lengthy application. And, and since it's federal funds, there's certain requirements. So I looked at two consultants. One is Hubert Quintana out of the economic development. He would charge us 4% at a total amount, so that would be about $30,000. And then another consultant, JJ Consultants, would charge us $5,000. So my recommendation is go with the $5,000. And what JJ Consultants would, will do is work with me and Brittany. And what they would do is they would mentor us on how to prepare the application. I think it's important that we learn how to do it, instead of hiring somebody else to do it, because once we learn how to do it, the next time we think we're on home, we're going to have to bring some people in. But that would be about $5,000 to submit the application for between $750,000 to $1 million road project. So that's something that.
Use that on existing road construction.
That's a good question.
Maybe that's a good one.
That's a good question, Commissioner. I will, I will definitely look into that, because I know with the Main Street Road Project, we may have additional costs for that. That's, I will definitely look into that. But we're looking about $750,000 to $1 million road project. And then the other one is called the TPF grant. That's local DOT transportation project funds, and that is between, again, that's also $750,000 to $1 million road projects. So myself, working, planning, zoning, and Brittany, will definitely put an application together, submit for those road, road projects. Now, keep in mind, all that needs to be approved by commission. We'll make our recommendations to the commission, and then the commission will have to decide specific road projects. And so right now, we have our Main Street project. We have Jackson Street project.
Which Jackson Street was, the grant for that was actually one of those TPF grants several years back.
Now, our goal is to, if we work and identifying these funds, again, everything that I've discussed are state funds. This is not coming from the general fund. Now, keep in mind, if we qualify for the CDVG, there's a matching fund. But if, I don't mind being in that position, if we can get, if we can bring in $750,000 to $1 million into the city of Lovington. That's something we need to address. But our goal is to have road projects every year. I think if we can have one or two road projects every year in our community, we'll make a difference. As long as we're persistent and we continue to do what we need to do, we will, we will address the infrastructure in the city. So that's our goal. Okay? That's all I have. Mr. Mayor, Commission, any, any questions?
Well, the concerns are not the more, no. Appreciate that. I think there's one, one thing to add on to that is the 1.2 million that we have, we have that, but we're going to receive an additional 1.2 million. The objective is to put one in the bank, spend the other one. So we'll still have that 1.2 million in reserves. So it's this 1.2 million, we're fixing to have another check from the beds to the first week of August. So it's additional 1.2. So it still has to be approved by the board to release this 1.2 that we currently have, and then the 1.2 that we receive in August will replace that other 1.2. So that way, we still got even balance. Anyway, this, this, what Dr. Martinez had mentioned, it don't have. Uh, anyway, this, this, what Dr. Martinez had mentioned, it don't happen until after July one, when our new fiscal year starts. So all these, a lot of these projects will, will tick off till after July. Crystal?
Mayor Commissioners, um, I have the Main Street project finally on the agenda for the change order. So we'll go through that when it comes up. Um, and I also have information on Jackson Street project. As everybody knows, the magistrate project's moving right along. They can move those buildings rather quickly. So, um, any questions? I was out last week training in class in Albuquerque, so I was kind of just trying to catch up today.
Any questions about? Thank you. Deputy Attorney, Mr. McMan.
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, I don't have anything new from our last meeting. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions about? Questions about the board, moving on to public comment?
You're leaving in, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, Eric Valencia. Uh, I've reviewed the proposed ordinance that would, that I would like to see changes in. The campus. I would like to see the churches removed, this ordinance. First of all, the state lodges in required. And also on the cannabis establishments. They shouldn't all be treated the same due to retail and consumption lounge will be heavy foot traffic. To whenever you have your, your, your producer here that is just, you know, just a farmer. There's, there's no business there for anybody to be there. No in and out, no foot traffic. So taking consider that all establishments ain't the same.
You want to say identify, to identify, put traffic laws in the farming, right, to separate?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Because the retail and consumption lounge is going to be everyday customers to where you have your producer that has just got his operation facility to where nobody has no business there. So I just don't see reason of that establishment being involved within the church requirement. And then, and then as far as the retail consumption lounge. You know, like, as far as that goes in, you know, we got a brewery right by a church. So it's like, why y'all treat this legal business any different from any other legal business? And so with that, it's considering they're getting in a petition, the same as the alcohol ordinance required within the brewery was able to get established there. So but my biggest thing is producers should just be exempt from the church business requirement. Like, I just don't see any, any safety issues or anything with the producer near a church. And also cannabis will be bringing GRTs for our city, which is like, we need to worry about us. You know what I'm saying? Like, this is just going to, within our GRTs, it's going to find our, our community. We don't got to worry about the state. So that's another good thing, good be.
Hold on a second. Repeat that again, please?
The GRTs, it'll be staying local. Like, we'll get a local fund for, we don't have to worry about any state funds. From our growth receipts, everything will stay local.
Okay. I'm confused in your
Part there is, it's just about this community.
Understand, the purchaser will, but you don't benefit anything from the growers or anything like that. As a community, only as the purchase price.
And purchase price will
So, so let's pretend Liz is the farmer, I'm the seller.
Correct.
That means I have the city limits. Liz sells it to me at wholesale price with no tax on it. Only when I sell it does the city of Lovington benefit the one point three whatever percent, a very small portion.
Yes, sir. But the establishment itself is going to be paying those
But it's only one percent. That's all we got. For every hundred dollars of product you sell, I get one dollar.
Okay.
So, so the producer, now we have Liz, we have David, we have Bernard, we have Scott, all farming in the city. I don't benefit from that. I only benefit from the retail side of it.
Correct. So that's why you have a producer and you have a retailer. So it's going to benefit either way.
It won't benefit. Only the retail benefits the community.
I understand. So a retailer is going to benefit the community.
Now, now, if she purchases something from, we'll just say, Will over there. It's inside the city limits, then yes, I can gain, gain something else from that.
Yeah.
But typically, usually producers, the city does not benefit much from them.
But it has to get to a retailer that is going to be in our local community.
Maybe, maybe she doesn't sell to the community. Maybe she's on the off, doesn't have a better market.
No, not necessarily. They don't care. Like, we need to worry about our, our patients here. Hops, they have, have, they don't, they don't care about anybody. We need, we need to worry about ourselves. So, but either way, it's going to benefit our city. So like, just take into consideration, this cannabis business shouldn't be any, treated any different from any other legal business. So if the state doesn't require this, why is the city? Thank you for your time, Mayor Commissioner. Have a good evening.
I'd like to speak, Dave Rowdler, Pastor Jackson Avenue Baptist Church. And all I'm asking, if, all I'm asking for, and I spoke with many of you before, is that, uh, we treat the cannabis the same as we treat alcohol. And as the gentleman talked about, we do have a brewery that's close to a Methodist church. But brewery requested permission before they installed it next to the, uh, Methodist church. And so it was just a courtesy on that part. They agreed with it. But there was a procedure and a protocol that went about it. So as far as treating cannabis and alcohol the same, I, I agree, we need to treat it the same. Also, as far as producers. If you're allowed to produce marijuana around that, uh, community and grow a certain amount, how many of us are, have got still in our backyard producing moonshine? Okay? So I just say, we hold to the same criteria for alcohol as for cannabis. Everything's equal. It all works out that way. We start making preferential things. Hey, I want to start producing alcohol and cannabis on the property that we got next to the church. You know, and then you all get mad at me for doing that. I'm sorry. I'm not going to do that. Uh, but the, uh, the idea is, is that that is what the law says. Let's just be equal about it all the way around. Thank you.
There's no further public comment. Moving on to non-exempt items, Dr. Martinez.
Mr. Mayor, members of the, of the commission, first item, discussion of appointing a commissioner as a representative to the repelling solid waste authority.
Now, just be a, just make commissioners aware of there is appointment coming up and it'd be an action item on our next meeting. So we just have to come up with one.
Who was the last commissioner to serve on that? You're still on that?
Next item is discussion of appointing a commissioner as a representative to the Parks and Recreation Board.
Mr. Compliment served on this board. So we'll just need to discuss who to appoint.
Liz, Liz, I'm the one that has children.
So that will come up.
I second that motion.
Do you guys want to say what for April or for the March last week?
I would, let's, uh, for April, maybe we have the whole new board here and that would be very quick.
Okay.
That would be the same with the last one? Yeah, we'll wait, wait till April. Hey, Mayor, let's start on solid waste.
Yeah, I agree with that. Yeah, so, uh, we'll bring that as an action item on April fourteenth.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, just for your information, we will attend the next solid waste authority meeting, which will be this Thursday at eleven o'clock Hobbs. So I will attend that. If there's any updates, I will present that to the commission.
Thank you. Sir, any further questions for Dr. Martinez? No further questions. Moving on to action items. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero zero eight, change of order, Main Street.
Motion was made by Commissioner Gandy, seconded by Commissioner Bowe. Crystal?
Mayor Commissioners, we, I don't have the official change order paperwork from the state. We had had this several, several months ago about, uh, the amount this change order would be. Uh, you have it in your packet. Do you have any questions on it? I know we went through this before, but it is, uh, change order number seven for the state. Only the first one for us. They have other change orders that they have to deal with, with just the contract. So, uh, the original cost was the one point two. Uh, this additional cost will be five hundred thirty-four thousand. It's changed. Um, the new talk, project total cost would be one million, seven hundred ninety-four thousand, two hundred nine dollars.
And this is our cost?
Our cost.
So Crystal, what term do we have funds allocated for this, receiving the full hundred? What's like this pass?
Um, that would be um, because I'm still looking, I don't know where all that funding
Well, we did, we did additional four hundred this past, or capital outlay for this past, but hasn't gotten our votes yet. Wants to sign off.
Okay. We, we have, um, located two equal items, a little over four hundred each. One is titled, um, Main Street, one's, one's for the sewer. Um, so it appears it's in two different funds. Now, the document that Crystal had found with those two items, um, though that's listed as a budget item. And so it was budgeted for, um, I need to, we'll talk about the, the discussion here in a little bit about allocations. Um, kind of the systemic issue that I found dealing with allocations. Um, and so that is going to get wrapped up in that project. Um, trying to figure out the proper and improper allocations. Um, but you know, it's, it's, it's just hard to tell right now and we are talking about it overage anyway. So of a million dollars even over what was budgeted. Um, so we're right in the middle of a project. I, I don't see that we can do anything about it. So.
Yeah. And I think it costs a bit of chat, that they, we have a six-year, four-year to pay that off.
We have four years after the end of the construction project to pay off the NMDOT. I know we did a reallocation, uh, for some capital outlays. We turned in the paperwork for that. So I haven't heard back from that yet. But that was like three hundred and something. Because from the eighth and the three, that was supposed to be where we were close to our one point two. Um, but like I said, it's, we got to figure out where it's all at.
So you're saying right now, we have approximately somewhere as the city of four hundred thousand.
Eight, eight. Yeah, for whatever reason, they put four in, in one fund and four in another.
Yes.
Plus the four hundred, we were allocated.
Four hundred thirty-four thousand from capital. Yes, recently, recently. On top of, what, on top of the issue for capital, like, seeing a little over four hundred. But it hasn't been signed by the government just yet. So once it gets signed, just something we can talk about.
So we're looking at, once it gets, hopefully that gets okay, we're looking at basically having a hundred one million, three hundred and forty thousand dollars. Right?
And then this is, uh, one thing to keep in mind, uh, on this change order, they still haven't rolled up the rest of the street.
Yeah, uh, we've already, yeah.
Additional change order. There may be additional, so I just want to later understand that. Might be a half bean by the end of this entire project, might be additional half beans. So maybe we'll be looking for a cap op. I'll leave money for the next four years to, uh, to add to this, uh, negative balance, uh, bring up. Often one in, in our favor with cap op funding, but we have additional body there to come up with additional funding.
Yeah, because every, you know, every bit they tear up, it's like we've already found a four-inch line that was not in the plans. It's got to be reconnected. So we got to come up with the connections for that. It's another twelve-inch insert valve that wasn't in the original plans. I mean, that's just, we're going to bind these things all along there. We've got two or three different two-inch uh, lines that cross cut and got to be attached in there and weren't in the original plans. Um, you know, our infrastructure was just so old and we did not have good plans on how it was installed and built. Um, so we're going to run into these problems. But if you've seen the picture of the condition of our water line, you know it need, it, it needs replacing severely.
Any other questions about? No, there's no questions about the board. Go, Chen.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Bocher?
Yes. Yes. Resolution passed. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion, resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero two one, approval of extend Mexico DOT grant funded project. Back up one. Twenty-two. What's that? Oh, nevermind. Sorry. I'm on the wrong spot. I'm in the wrong spot. Second. Let's get the lines up now. LP two zero zero eight, Jackson Avenue.
Second. And motion made by Mr. Bowe, seconded by Mr. Gandy. Crystal?
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, okay. So we needed to try to get an extension on our Jackson Street project. As you know, this project was supposed to be completed by June thirtieth of this year. We have the contract. You guys approved that one. It's, the work is going to be starting. We've got progress moving forward on all of it. Uh, the only thing we're worried about is if we hit bad weather, construction has to slow down. If we hit a problem and something else has to be fixed. Um, or just the fact that even if they finish the construction on time, which is going to be cutting it close, we still need to complete our paperwork to turn it in before that deadline. So this is just getting, uh, your approval for us to request this extension. We're only asking for three additional months. Because, uh, me and Ms. Pettigrew do believe that we're going to be able to finish the project and get our paperwork done with the extra three months.
If this, for this year?
Yes.
This one year or?
This, well, it'll be, um, yeah. We're asking for the extension to go to August of twenty twenty-two, this year. No, it's just a three-month extension.
Yes, sir.
So how are they looking? How long is it going to take them to do this project?
They do believe they can get the road work done in two to two and a half months.
So we're looking at, when do they start?
We've already started.
They're, yeah. They have mobilized and you will start seeing the, uh, Jackson Street will start having the detour signs go up and things will start happening.
We've already, we've already
See, I've been out of town. Yes.
So we're looking at the middle of March, middle of April, middle of May. Let's say weather permitting. End of May, so start in June. For you to get your paperwork done, do you have sufficient time, June? July and August?
Yes. That's why we only
The reason I was asking, you need to see about September thirty-first, thirty, September thirty-eighth. You're not going to be, you're not going to be in a crunch. That's the only thing I'm asking.
Well, that's what, so we discussed it. We've looked at the timeline and what we see because, you know, Lovington, we're on a shop at Colleague. We've allocated for that time for weather days. We believe the state will allow us this extension. The fact that, um, where this project is being worked on right now, we're nearing the end of the fiscal year. They're going to give us this. From what we understand from the state, they don't allow some of this extension now. So we're hoping just to get this extension. We believe that we can function with that timeline properly and everything that can get
We believe that we can function with that timeline properly and everything that can get done, everything will be signed and completed before we even hit the August 31 day. And so this is just to give us a little cushion in case we hit that Colleji cap or we have bad weather days. Everyone knows in April we get that freak freeze that comes through. So we're just giving this for a little cushion. We believe we'll be finished with it way before this though.
Because I know how things come up and you get more projects, you get more jobs to do. I want to see you cut yourself short. I understand we're putting it out there to the state, so if they're allowing us it, you got to be gracious and accept it, take it. But I'm just wanting to make sure that you've given yourself enough time to get this done.
Yeah, we do believe we've given ourselves ample time to get it done.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chair, any questions? For the questions, road call Shannon.
Commissioner White? Yes. Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Boettler?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Yes. Resolution passed, do I have a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion for Resolution 2022, approval of Paul Rose signature.
I got it.
Motion made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Gandy.
I can, I can go. This is just a request to remove Fire Chief Terrance Lardo, Chief of Police David Miranda, and we'll add the Treasurer and City Manager to the signature card. And we'll keep Shannon on there.
Turn questions about the board, road call Shannon.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Yes. Resolution passed, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion for Resolution 2022 dash zero four, appointment of, I can't read. Approval of 23, 2022 dash oh twenty three, approval signatures, full at Estacado better for the.
Motion was made by Commissioner Gandy, seconded by Commissioner Bowe.
Same thing, we never actually removed Anthony from it, so we'll remove him. There's only like two CDs over here at Estacado, so that's why we didn't ever remove him. But then we'll add Treasurer Kennedy on there. And Deputy Treasurer and Treasurer.
Turn questions about the board. There's no questions about the board, road call Shannon.
Commissioner Boettler?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner White? Yes.
Yes. Resolution passed, do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2022 dash zero two four, appointment of Representative Lee County Solid Waste Authority.
I'll second that. Motion was made by Commissioner Bowe, seconded by Commissioner Bernard.
I do have a recommendation, incoming Commissioner Roberts, but I can't send him forward. Since I've held that spot for a while, it is more appropriate.
If, if I may, this is to appoint a staff member at this time. So it's usually held by the City Manager, so we're just requesting a City Manager by Dell Martinez onto there.
I guess for that.
In April, we will appoint a Commissioner.
Wrong. Commissioner Bowe, would you like to amend your resolution, sir, to add?
Yes. I'd like to amend my Resolution 2022 dash zero two four. Make my new resolution. 2022 dash zero two four, appointment of representation, Representative of the Lee County Solid Waste Authority. And I'd like that to be City Manager of Dell Martinez.
I'll second that. Motion was amended by Commissioner Bowe, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Is there any further questions? No further questions, road call Shannon.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner White? Yes. Commissioner Bean?
Yes.
Commissioner Boettler?
Yes.
Yes, Resolution passed, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2022 dash zero five, appointment of a representative to the Southeastern New Mexico Economic Development District. Oh, cog. Board, yeah, City Manager Dell Martinez.
Second, motion was made by Commissioner Gandy to appoint Dr. Martinez, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Is there any further questions? There's no further questions, road call Shannon.
Commissioner White? Yes. Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Boettler?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Yes, Resolution passed, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2022 dash zero two six, point two, appointment to the CERPO Committee and Technicals Committee.
Second.
Wait, 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 wait. I'd like to appoint City Manager Dell Martinez and Street Supervisor Bernardo Gutierrez to the CERPO Technical Committee.
Second, motion was made by Commissioner Gandy to appoint Dr. Martinez and Doctor, I mean, excuse me, Bernardo Gutierrez, seconded by Commissioner Bowe. Is there any questions? No questions, road call Shannon.
Commissioner Boettler?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner White? Yes. Mayor Toomey?
Yes. Resolution passed, do I have a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2022 oh two seven, approval of an application of New Mexico Department of Transportation municipal program, MAP funds for the design of rehabilitation of reconstruction of West Jackson Avenue, five streets to Seventeenth Street.
Second, motion was made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Bowe.
Hi, Commissioner, Mayor Commissioners.
Oh, yes.
Yes, so first of all, Brittany Pettigrew, I'm from the city of Livingston. Been the project inspector for the city over the years, and I know I have the face on the patient. Just wanted to introduce myself. So what we have here, last week, the state sent out a reminder for a call for projects to remind everyone that the due date was coming up soon for the MAP grant program for 2022, 2023 year, this full year. When we received this email, I spoke to Dr. Martinez and the mayor and we decided to, you know, we wanted to see if we wanted to actually intend to go for this because the due date is actually tomorrow for it. And so we talked about it and we decided that we wanted to go for the grant. So what we're doing to meet the deadline, we decided to go for the phase two of Jackson Avenue. We've already applied for funds for this project through capital outlay. Unfortunately, this year we weren't allocated those funds. And to meet the deadline of tomorrow, that project has already, we've already had a rough estimate from the engineer on what it will take to actually build the project. And so we already had information and data to work with instead of completely reconstructing a new possible project. We decided to go with that. So this project, if you look at the sheets that I provided you, will begin on Ninth Street to Seventeenth Street on Jackson Avenue. And so you're beginning of the project and the end of the project. And what we're going to do, because normally with these kind of applications, you need to do a traffic study, flood study. We don't have time for that because we got the reminder for this. We've informed the state that admin is changed and so we got this update. We didn't have time to do all that. So instead of asking for the full reconstruction amount for the Jackson Avenue project, and if you look at the estimate sheet that I have for you, which has a pink highlighted line, instead of going from the 1.5 million, you're just going to add the MAP grant program for the design amount. So it was estimated at 75,000, a little over that. And with inflation, we're going to ask for 85,000 instead from the design, from the MAP grant. And so what this is today is asking for the application, you need a, what is it called? You need a formance or.
Resolution.
Resolution, you need a resolution of support from the commission for this grant to submit it to our application. So what we're asking is permission to go for a design for the amount of 85,000 and asking that for the MAP. And so that's what we're asking you to give approval for today. And the matching funds on that grant, Brittany? So if you look in the sheet I gave you here, the letter, our match for that will be 25%. So we will have to give 21,000, 21, 250,000, $21,000. We'll have to give $21,000 with our match. We're asking for 85,000. And so the state's match will be 63,000 correctly and our match will be 21,000. Now, with like this project we're doing, the Jackson project we're currently doing, that was allocated to us by the MAP grant fund in 2019. And so we're continuing that. So we didn't have to pay that for about four years. We don't have to finish that till right now. And so with this one, we won't have to pay that match for about four years after the project's completion. Or we have four years to pay the matches after the money's up.
And if approved tonight, something to add to our budget, then we, we have to spend it in our next fiscal year, but we can keep it on the budget. Let's go. First time we've said we not, we don't have to make that thing for four years, but I'd like to get it on the budget every year just in case we have funds for it.
Well, and this is also just going for design. We have four years to actually go for design for the project. We don't have to go next year to where we have to have the design and standby engineer. We have four years to use this.
Any questions about? There's no questions about the board, road call Shannon.
Commissioner Bean?
Yes.
Commissioner White? Yes. Commissioner Boettler?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Mayor Toomey?
Yes. Resolution passed, do I have a motion?
Five minute eighty, ordinance relating campus business assets, registration committee, meeting section five, 140. Mayor Commissioners?
Second.
Oh, go ahead.
Second. Motion was made by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Bowe.
Mayor Commissioners, good evening. Take into consideration, if you want to take into consideration what was talked about earlier, we can handle this and go back out and put the exemption in there for the church. This is a requirement as to alcohol ordinance. Or you could take out the church with it altogether. Or we can go ahead and just move forward on it.
The second question was foot traffic and farming, is there a separation in committed to of the ordinance?
And the ordinance, no. So what he is talking about is, as a producer, they're going to have basically their staff that shows up every day and comes to work. And then, so that's about the foot traffic they're going to get. Whereas retail, you're going to have people coming in and out, customers all day long. So he's saying that the foot traffic is a lot heavier versus the people coming to work and staying there through the day. So he feels that they shouldn't be treated as things, correct? So he can understand, like if it was by the church, why people wouldn't want that foot traffic all day long. Whereas as a producer, they're not going to have that foot traffic. So how is it going to disturb that type of business? And then with the church part of it and then with having the exception for like the brewery and be able to get that signatures and do the process of that, at the very least have that in there. So that way, if it is the retail, it has the same option to get the signatures and get an exemption, the same as alcohol does.
My opinion, my opinion on that and the reason we're going with the church route is the older, but cannot show prejudice between alcohol and cannabis. So I think we. So that was my, that was my view on that. But I don't, you know, we can't, we can't show prejudice.
Didn't you say the state allowed certain?
So church is not in the state. It's only schools and daycare centers.
But you have to, City Attorney Patrick, so what, what's your feelings on that? Going a different route on one and not being equal to the other? That, that was my.
I think my position is the same as the first time we talked about this, is if we have to treat those businesses the same as other business unless there's some specific, you know, articulable fact as to why. And one of the things that's important about the cannabis ordinance, which I recommended each one of you go read and take a look at, is that the state specifically let out churches. So I think that's a very telling message from the state's perspective. So that may be what our state representatives or the majority that passed this, their position is on the manufacturer, distribution, retail, sales of cannabis is that they didn't want to restrict it as far as the distance from a church. The ability for the city to come in or other municipalities is to take a look at zoning issues if they have zoning and then density issues. So how many of those types of establishments could you have on one block or in a certain area of the city? And then I think dealing with some of the other issues about the hours of operation, those types of things. So I think you're somewhat limited by what the state law has. I don't know if there's an exact answer that's out there since this is all new. How the court would come down on a regulation that dealt with this particular type of activity. And I, I think what would happen is like we talked about early on in this process, if, if there was an issue about foot traffic or noise or odors, you should be able to deal with that with some of our current zoning. If there's an issue about health and safety, there may be some health and safety issues with tobacco sales also. So there's a number of different things out there that you should take into consideration of why we would be doing this as opposed to following exactly what's in state law. So I can't tell you how the court is going to shake out on that. I know that Laura talked to somebody at the state and asked that question specifically because we had talked about it and the state gave her an answer. I don't know if that answer is something that's absolute defense if we get into the courtroom, but, but that's kind of where we are. And so it's up for the commissioners to take a look at some of those, some of those issues and really make a decision about which way to go. But my position has been the same from early on. The statute that the state passed is pretty clear. And there is some specific language in there that says, we can't do anything that's going to restrict or prohibit a business that's authorized them. So how do you interpret that? I'm not sure where the court would fall on that, but it's pretty broad, so.
So your recommend, your recommendation would be to follow the same line? Yeah, I have lines as, as if someone wants an alcohol establishment or a question brought one by a church.
So without alcohol establishment, I think it's 600 feet.
Now. Three, three.
And, and so the way we dealt with that is to have a provision and that, that may be the middle ground that, you know, you guys take a look at, is that there's a process not unlike what we have with, what we did with Drylands is that they were within a certain distance from the church. Drylands had an opportunity to meet with the church and say, hey, would you be opposed to this? Could we have a waiver on that 300 foot limit? And they were able to work something out, brought it back to the commission. So the commission was able to approve that. That, that may be the middle ground to try to satisfy both sides. But I can't tell you if we got drug into the courtroom, how a judge would read and interpret that. Because we had the state saying, I think that's.
They said that we could, they had to put it in there. We can't, we're allowed to be stripped on that. But definitely where it becomes an issue is like the gentleman brought up, is there is no exemptions. We get any exemptions in there where alcohol, we have an exemption in there. If they get that waiver, then they can do it. So you're treading in water because you want to make sure that you're, you know, treating everybody equally and not putting those requirements on there justly.
Well, and, and my concern still falls back on the motion to this amount. I'm just, I'm worried that, that, and, and that puts, makes the difference in my, my, my chain of thought is that. I'm just, I'm worried that, that, and that puts, makes the difference in my, my, my chain of thought is that alcohol, you know, served and so forth, and, but, but you're doing a lot of feeding, you're doing a lot of circulation of, of their atmosphere inside the farm. It has to go somewhere. Let's say it's downwind and they're having services on Sunday, and all of a sudden, the wind's just hitting it, just riding, and everybody inside the congregation is getting a whiff of it, and it just doesn't. I'm just worried about more or less pollution side of it. Everything else seems to be understandable, but how do we address the pollution side?
Well, I think we could take a look at any other business. You know, if I moved into the neighborhood and opened up a fat rendering plant, if that was allowed in that zone and the smell was offensive, you could come back and say, well, we have some rules against that. There's public and private nuisance, and there's some other restrictions about the types of businesses you can have in certain zones. And so I think whether we have this ordinance in place or not, we could still address some of those issues.
And, and going back a few years, I know we did that with dairy farm. We kind of like put it, we, we started doing a zone outside the city because we had some that were close by, and they did have that. And they did, I mean, to, to the point where someone's house, I had friends that walked into someone's house. It smelled awful because it was downwind from that dairy, and it was affecting, and that's where I'm worried that if we have a facility close to a church, and all that, that odor that produces from vending, I think at one, at one point you get saturated with it, you know? And that, and it's all new, I guess, you know, because it's, it's all new to us, but it's just sometimes, it's a thought that I have that I'm worried that, how can we address that? Because if it is worst-case scenario, and if we let off, it lets off continuously a bad odor, and that church is now smelling like, like a farm, I don't think it's just, just be right for them to, you know, have that. I mean, I wouldn't want it by my house, and all of a sudden, it's just my house smells like it. They're gonna come over, chief, come over to say they are gonna risk, or a federal agent come over or something, you know? It's just that odor set up.
We can address that with a nuisance ordinance. So with the nuisance ordinance, it does talk about odors and, and things of that nature. So if there are those complaints, I can address that, and I can take the complaint, I can go talk to the, yes, it'll take some investigating and kind of have to prove it. But we can also work with the, the owners of these businesses. They all seem to be very willing to work with the city. That was one of my biggest concerns when it first started coming in and talking about doing these things, is there gonna be an odor problem? I knew that was gonna be the big, big concern of everybody, is neighboring walls, everything else. How are you gonna obtain these odors and make sure that you don't become a nuisance and be a good neighbor? And they all, every last one of them has expressed that they will be talking to their neighbors. They will be good neighbors. If there is an issue, they're gonna, they're gonna address that issue. There is a type of filtering system that they can use and stuff like that. So it seems to be something everybody seems to be pretty on board with, that they're going to work with us. If it becomes a nuisance, there is laws so that I can go and I can cite them, and we can work it out that way. But I really don't, I feel like that everybody right now is on board. It's very new. And so we are maybe gonna run into a few pickups, but I think that we can work past that process.
But is there enough teeth in that ordinance that we have for, for that to, to, let's say if it's really bad, and can we shut down that business? I mean, is there teeth in it?
No, we wouldn't be able to shut the business down. We can take them to court. I can cite them into court, and then it would be up to the judge on, you know, what the fines and things like that are. We could look at the business ordinance and look and see if we can ask to revoke that, if it was something that was a true nuisance, and then we don't want to, but we're gonna have to, yeah, we have to do a little bit more research on it. Can we do that as far as revoking their license? Type of thing. I don't see this happening. I haven't seen it make the news in Colorado where, you know, this is something that's been going on for years.
Yeah, and there's also a process that the owner of that property, whether it's a residential structure or another type of business or a church, they still have the ability, despite what ordinances we have, to use state law for nuisances. So, so there, there is another avenue for that particular property owner to move forward. It, it doesn't necessarily solve the problem in the short term, but there are other things out there in addition to our city ordinances about, about nuisances, smells, odors, those types.
But how, how technical does it get on the smell thing? Do you have to go like one to per million of smell and all that and measure it? And I'm probably gonna have to go with that, because just because it stinks to this person, it may not to that person. So there's gonna be that technical thing that's gonna be.
If I was gonna compile a case, then I would, it would be, like, say that it's in this neighborhood. Say the church, great example, because that's what we're talking about. We're the church. So they went to Sunday congregation, and it smelled like a scum factory, and there's those scum running around everywhere. So everybody in that congregation can sign a petition and say, look, I was bothered by this smell. And then I could take that and then turn it in with my statements to the court, and if I need to bring them in as witnesses and put them on the stand and do that whole thing, there's a whole process that that's what we would do. So you have to, like any case in court, you have to present it, you have to have witnesses to back that. I don't know if they're gonna have a thing to actually measure, like you do other type of air quality type things.
So, so here's where I stand. Good, bad, and different, who likes this, whatever. So I have a couple of huge issues. A, whether you consider it or not, in my life, I serve a God. So I'm torn with that deal because alcohol and cannabis are now both allowed. Fine, if you use that, that's your issue. You can't work for me at TWS. I don't even wanna be around you typically. So the issue I have is, I wanted to make it as equal to alcohol as possible. You know, it's three hundred feet, if it's fifty feet, whatever the ordinance is, alcohol is this, I think cannabis should follow by that same rule in my community. I don't care about the rest of the state. This is my community. These are my citizens. Now, I know there's a majority of citizens that are one hundred percent for cannabis, and that's fine. I get that. I wanna work with this as best as I can, but I don't use and I don't need. But there's also a group of people that don't want anything to do with it and would like it shunned from our community. So where am I at to equal that bridge? You know, where do I balance out at? As the individual, it's gonna hurt my business because it's hard enough to find employees. So back to the three hundred foot. I think the three hundred foot shouldn't be there. But here's the next problem I have. They gave a business the authority to put it anywhere in my community they want to. Next to a church, next to my house, next to my neighbor's house, next to your house, next to his house, wherever they want it to. It's a business. My beauty shops aren't supposed to be running around in the local community. If it's zone for residential, if it's zone for residential, a business shouldn't be in there. My vacuum truck shouldn't be in there. I don't own one, but it shouldn't be in there. It's a residential area. So you see the difficulty I'm stuck in? We already have rules in all these places, and the state came in and said, whatever you want, we want it in the state. But as citizens, we kind of gotta bump that deal. I understand where Patrick's at. He's trying to keep me out of a multimillion-dollar lawsuit. But my deal is, I want it to be the same as everything else. If it's a business, it ought to be in a business district, you know? If it's a commercial business, it needs to be in a commercial district. If it's retail, it needs to be in retail. I don't want Joe Johnny. In my neighborhood, there's already other questionable things that happen, and everybody in this community has the same situation. There's a questionable situation that's going on. I don't want an uncontrolled, because that's basically what it feels like to me, is an uncontrolled situation with cannabis. All I'm asking for is give me three hundred foot from a church, follow the same rules that alcohol does, and give me enough teeth that when it goes to the judge, that something will actually happen. You know, it'll grab their kitchen and go, oh. That's all I'm asking for. Because if I get a ticket with a CDL, I don't get to go to Judge Ken and go, Judge Ken, I got a ticket, gonna drive like an idiot. We all know I drive that. But the fact is, the state and the feds can, and says, I'm responsible. I don't get away out. I paid for my ticket. So I want something that gives me the cushion away from my church, allows my community the flexibility to do what their choices are, but yet, you know, where do I stand here? You know, I don't wanna endanger my community with a mega lawsuit. So where, where do I stand? I don't know where the rest of these guys stand, but that's where I stand. That's my struggle.
So I think everything that's been written out addresses that. We're not allowing it in zone A, so you're not gonna see the business in there. You can't keep your neighbor from growing his legal amount, but you.
But wait, wait. You said he can grow, which means he can sell, right?
No, no.
Okay.
I can grow for my own use. So if I live next door to you, and I wanna grow my amount of plants that I wanna grow, I will grow six, and I can sit in my backyard and smoke it all day long, all that I want to. And there's nothing you can do about it, there's nothing I can do about it, there's nothing the or the state can do about it, because that's legal.
Go ahead.
But a, a producer cannot come in next door, or a retail seller cannot come in next door to you because.
Because that's the way I understood it.
No, we, no, not with what has been written.
That means the state will allow that. Is that, is that correct? Is that how we read it? Or am I misreading all the words?
Personal production, you can't sell because it has to go through a file track from the state to sell. And you gotta have a business license to sell.
Then he thinks.
You personally.
Right, he's saying that the state will allow, if I wanted to, I could have a retail shop at my house. The state's not necessarily saying they can't do that, so.
They won't, they won't.
I think, I think Mr. Candy's referring to the farming. Can you, can you, farm be placed next to his house? Okay, that's, that's what his.
That's what is written in front of you. The only thing that, everything you're talking about has been written and is in front of you and what was sent out for publication. The only thing is, is that exception. So we put that you can't be by the church, but however, we didn't put the exception like there is in alcohol. So what, everything that you're saying, I believe this is touching that. The only thing is, is we don't have the exception with that freedom.
We have the exception in there, then that equals it up with alcohol.
Correct.
Bumper for both.
The thing is with alcohol, I looked at the ordinance, and I'm almost positive that the state is three hundred feet, but the city of Uvinton is six hundred feet. I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure.
I remember three hundred, but I'm not gonna.
That's a state. Okay. I think, I think it's in all the words. But I could be wrong.
No, fair enough, fair enough. Either way, it's, it's x amount of feet, so, yeah.
But, but.
Put that language in there. The exceptions, bring it back, but it would have followed the, I mean, I guess you give back all the same guidelines as alcohol and alcohol. Because I don't wanna, I don't want to just say just three hundred feet, just follow the same guidelines to see the petition.
Are we gonna go as far as petitioning? Because it's allowing the petition. She's on, sorry, petition. Laura. I'm going as far as petitioning. Do we add language in there as well, that you could petition the churches? So I'm trying to figure out how, how we, we follow the guidelines of alcohol or gonna, or gonna just, they can choose what, what an alcohol can and cannot. I mean, I agree with Commissioner Candy's, just follow the same guidelines as alcohol, and if they can petition, but we all wanna make sure they petition this same guideline.
Correct, and ordinance five point oh eight point one four oh is in the alcohol licensing. This is the petition for the three words that win, and it gives that exception. So we do have that. I looked it up, and we do have that in alcohol ordinance where that, where that basically exception is. So yes, we can, I could turn around and do that with the same as for the cannabis ordinance and put that exception in there. Pretty much we're following as closely as those guidelines. That was just one thing that I did not catch that was brought to my attention by this gentleman.
One, one last question, Patrick. Since it's taken us quite some time to do this ordinance.
Right.
Where does, I don't know if this is the right terminology, the grandfather clause, the, the longer way to pass this ordinance, somebody can already establish a business and not have to follow these guidelines. We couldn't, couldn't until their, until the ordinance passes. I'm sorry. The state said we had until January one. We're already looking in March. We're in March. Probably by the end of this month, we'll pass it. So the last nine days, if someone has a business that they have to follow our guidelines, are they gonna follow the state?
I, I think we could, you know, more than likely, they're gonna come in, if they decided to come in next to a church, and, because really, most of what's in this ordinance tracks almost identical to what's with the state. So there's only a few things in here that are different, and that, that being one of them. So as an example, you know, if they chose to put that there, our position would have to be that they were put on notice that we were discussing it, and it might be an issue. They're gonna come back and say, it wasn't in the rules at the time I made my decision. And so then the court's gonna have to sort that out, and I think they'd have a pretty strong argument that it, it was not in the rules. But we still have all the other rules on the book as far as zoning and as far as the nuisance issues. All of those things are, are still there. We're not making any changes to those, so. But you're correct, the longer it takes, the more chance there is that somebody is gonna decide to do that. And, and, you know, I don't know if that would be a smart business decision because, you know, I think they're trying to come in and operate without offending their neighbor. And, and so that would probably be the last place I think they would pick. I could be wrong, but, you know, the longer we wait, the more opportunity that has to, to figure it out, they have.
And somebody is looking at a place that, and that's one of the things, is the church was not put into that by the state. So they're already starting their application process, things like that, and then all of a sudden, it was bam, wait, we don't want it near the churches. So it is gonna cause, and they've already spent the money for the plans and the engineering and things like that. So yes, this is gonna cause some hardship on people who have already looked at places, and we're not taking in the church into consideration for their business because it wasn't in the state statute. So yes, you are gonna look at that becoming an issue for somebody.
And that would be my recommendation to the board, that we put this next meeting with these changes in. And if we have to make changes to the ordinance for some reason, to bring back the ones back on the table with changes, I'd rather do that than not have something in place. So I think on our next meeting, we need to finalize this and have something in place, some sort of barriers in place that protect, protect our citizens, how we do.
Patrick, would we have to go back out for publication with these changes, or can you just come next time?
Yeah, if there are changes, we have to go back. And I, I think we need to make sure that we're absolutely clear on what kind of changes you guys wanna see the next time we come back.
Yeah, I think, I think that, yeah, we need to make clarity on that tonight, so that way we're not pressing it.
Next meeting, if we make changes, next meeting, it'll have to be approved to go back out for publication, and then it'll be the following meeting, or two meetings, before we can come back out. So it's gonna be after April. Yeah, so you're looking at May before you finalize anything, and I believe April is when the retail sales can start. So we cannot hold up if the gentleman comes in tomorrow and slaps this down, and it's near your church. There's absolutely nothing I can do to stop it from happening.
So then the question would be is, why bother? I mean, not that I agree with the young man in the corner over there at all, but, and, and I, I see where Patrick's at. The question is, why bother? You know, then, then, you know, because the state has already said, you're gonna do it like this, is this how we like it? You know? So then that, that means everyone in this class needs to call their, their representative and just raise a ruckus, call their governor and everybody else, because they missed something very important, you know? So maybe that's all we're gonna get changed to go to the state. But then they've already opened the door so much that what do you do?
Right, and in May, say if it takes us a while to get it, say if one business comes in, then it'll keep from other businesses coming in next to it. That's what, when you say why bother? Because if you strongly feel this way, even though one business may be able to get in, or two, you'll still prevent more going down, down the road from doing that. And we did put the, the density in there, which was allowed by the state, also to kind of help with issues.
But how do we go ahead and pass the ordinance tonight? And by, I don't know, maybe can we do that? Let's say we just go ahead and pass it, put it buried in place, then go out for, for, for.
Like a trial run in a minute as a.
So a minute.
I mean, what, I mean.
It's not uncommon for us to come back and amend it for this, if it's out there.
I said, I said, then the sooner the better we get this out there, since you're looking at it a month before we do it. A lot can happen within a month. If we go ahead and approve this tonight, and we have something in place, and then we can amend it on a later date, and I, and maybe we'll have something more, we may find a couple more issues we wanna address, add or, or subtract this ordinance, but I feel that maybe we, we, my recommendation, let's pass something tonight to protect citizens and commissioners who have issues with things that, but I think we need to put something in place. This, the longer way, grandfather clause becomes a ticket to.
For the state.
I didn't know, you know? I didn't know. I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't an ordinance, so I was allowed to do it, and that's where it's gonna.
Oh, wait, wait. There's always gonna be that one, because they already have that from the ETZ. Oh, I didn't know about that. That law's been in place for twenty-plus years.
No, I'm referring.
No, I understand, I understand. It's the same, same situation.
So my recommendation for us to pass it, take assistance, I love to know how it feel, maybe, and then we can come back. Maybe, or later. Take the citizens, I love to know how it feel, and then we can come back many, many later. Turn any other questions?
What about the people that already spent money for that license? Your citizens that you wanna take care of? Not bringing a business here.
Turn any other questions up? There are no further questions by the board. Go, go, Ken.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Doherty?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yeah.
Mayor from New York?
Yes.
President, who's in Texas? Go ahead, motion.
Mayor, I'd like, like a motion for the financial report.
Motion was made by Commissioner Danny, second by Commissioner White. Any, Trevor?
Um, yes, Mayor, I did ask Melissa to write down the, um, expense report items because it was double, you know, increases. So, um, she made these notes for me. The utilities, we have seen the price increase because of their price increases. Um, I'll be addressing the utilities with each department head on the budget meetings. Um, I felt like that was the best time to look at that and make sure that we're paying, that every department's paying what they should be. That we're not paying additional, um, you know, meters or things that we no longer own or things that should be shut down, et cetera. So we'll be looking at that. Um, there was a Cummins Rocky Mountain for seventeen hundred. It was split between police and fire per Detective Brandon. So, um, we have a library in North for twelve thousand, um, to Ellen. But she didn't, she just said it was charged to the library. She didn't give me a specific for what was. Uh, Fierro, Fierro, that is the CPA that's helping with the audit. It's not our auditing CPA, it's the additional consultant. Um, the auditing CPA, we have to do the actual R and P process to, to do that. Um, and so that's a set amount. And so that'll be, you know, I haven't seen that R and P, but I've seen previous ones, so I, I know about what they cost. Um, but the Fierro, Fierro was the additional one. And he's just charging apparently based on, um, time that he's spent. And so he just gave us an idea where it might fall. And I think we're already to that point, um, for the amount of time that he spent to try to clean this up, which we'll discuss that here in a minute. Um, Hagan Botham was about eleven thousand. They said it was abnormally high because there was a wastewater invoice that was six thousand dollars past due. Um, there's a, and, and I'll, I'll ask when we sit down with our wastewater budget meeting, I'll ask what that was in reference to. Um, I C M A is, was one thousand forty. That's a new membership for Dr. Martinez. Candy Kane is also another wastewater past due of thirty one hundred. That's the drilling company. And then Sidon's Martin Emergency for seven, almost seventy four hundred was for ambulance repairs. Is that the one that's in, that you were talking about today that was in Texas or is it a different one?
No, that one is, uh, they just, uh, yeah, returned back to us. It was a, uh, the gaskets for the valve covers replacement. So they had to tear it apart to get to it, and that's why that cost is so high.
Extreme reason?
Running up and down the roads.
So are there any questions about the expense report?
Yes, as far as the electric bills, I know we talked about that last month. When are we gonna open the bank?
Um, I want to have good figures going into the budget. Um, so we will definitely look at that. And then it's going to take, I'm sure, a meeting, um, to, with me and the County Electric and then, you know, so on and so forth. Me and Verizon, me and all these different vendors to try to take out old accounts. Um, you know, this includes telephones that we aren't using, cell phones that we aren't using. All of these sort of things need to be looked at because they've all just kept growing and growing and growing. And I think it's been a while since it's been, it's been monitored. So, um, that will all take place over just the next couple of months. And then going, hopefully, it'll be taken care of. So when the new budget kicks in, those will be right figures, correct figures that we can use for our budget. And then we'll roll into those months where we're actually paying exact figures rather than what we think is quite a bit of overage.
So not anytime soon.
Well, our budget process has to be completed by June first, so, um, we've only got till then. And it's, I mean, that's a, it's a tall order, um, including.
Yeah.
What I'm fixing to go over.
Seven, five days.
Yeah, so.
In Lee County, like a meter number, which is basic old dress instead of that color code, they name.
Well, the color code is one that our girls tried to do to simplify the meter.
Oh.
So that the, the, specifically the Lee County Electric bill, it's about an inch and a half thick every month. Um, they take the meters and the address, some of them have an address, some of them just have a meter reading.
Right.
And so there's not even an address. We have to figure out where those meters are. And some of them don't even have a meter. So I don't know why we're paying, you know.
Yeah, five, a meter.
And this has been going on for who knows how long. So that's the next question, you know, is.
They're gonna be a credit.
Are we, yes, exactly, so. Um, but, you know, as, as I come up with these actual figures, they'll obviously be brought to your attention, um, you know, individually. And so that's what I'm fixing to go into is this next, um, you know, project that I was working on and kind of how that came about, so.
Go ahead, just.
Okay, so, um, I was approached by Ellen with the economic development a little while back. And she was asking for, um, the Lita funds and what the balances were and what the allocations were per month. And so I kind of launched into a, um, a pretty time-consuming project, but, um, it was very lightening. Um, and I found a lot of other things that we're gonna talk about here. Um, and so what had happened was, um, we had an ordinance put in place in two thousand and ten to fund the Lita account with monies from our gross receipts. And that ordinance, um, actually says that we were going to split between a municipal infrastructure fund and the Lita fund. So I actually went all the way back to two thousand and ten. And I've given you this, it's the one on your screen is, is let, a lot harder to read. But, so table one, um, I went back to the R P five hundreds on the state taxation revenue department. And I pulled all of our figures back to two thousand and ten, the total distributed number. Um, I need to point out that in some cases where I found an issue with these allocations was because the figure was pulled from the total, uh, dispersed. And those are two different figures. The distributed figure is the one that actually comes to our account through an A C H payment. So table number two is the figures derived, uh, directly from New Mexico taxation revenue. And that was titled six forty five total municipal infrastructure. So on the, uh, ordinance that happened in two thousand and ten, that was the line item that we're to use. And then beginning February twenty twenty one, there's a six oh two fund that came on called total municipal receipts dash R. Um, that, we're gonna talk about here in a minute, but we hadn't been capturing that number correctly. Okay, so table one is actual figure from gross receipts. So if you're curious about what our gross receipts have been every month till that's two thousand and ten, there's your number right there. And that's total. Now, that is the amount that we got put in our account. That's not our gross receipts number because our gross receipts number is take, our intercept payments for our N M F A debt are taken out before this number. So we don't, it's just like taxes to your paycheck. You don't see your taxes before you get your paycheck. We don't see the intercept payments before they hit our paycheck, or they hit our account. So, um, gross receipts are that number plus the intercept. Okay? Um, but this is the better figure to go off of because that is money that we can't touch. And for the next twenty seven years, we won't touch it. So, uh, this is a good figure. Table number three on your second page is audited figures from N code ten. So this is what our system shows was allocated to the Lita funds all the way back till this ordinance was started. Table number four is derived directly from the city of Loveington ordinance four ninety six. So we need to talk about how there, um, could be a misinterpretation of the ordinance. But the figures that go here are pretty straightforward. It is the amount from, um, the municipal infrastructure line item up until February twenty twenty one. So up until a year ago, we just used that one line and we took half of it and we gave half to the Lita fund. And we gave half to a, to a municipal infrastructure fund. Okay, so the difference is, you can see in table three and table four, they were running exactly the same all the way up until eighteen nineteen column. So the figures, you know, like I said, straightforward, easy calculation. What happened in two thousand and eighteen nineteen was then they started trying to allocate the administration fees. And there was a bunch of other stuff going on with these spreadsheets, and it got convoluted. And these numbers started deviating a little bit. Um, but you can see it's only, you know, in two thousand and eighteen nineteen, it was less than a thousand dollar deviation. Um, nineteen and twenty, same thing, less than a thousand. So what happened then in twenty twenty one is halfway through the year where the municipal infrastructure six forty five fund was, it was tracking at about twenty five thousand per month. All of a sudden, it went down to less than two thousand. So to take the two thousand and divide it amongst the two, um, funds that were in the ordinance, then Lita would have dropped down to less than a thousand dollars per month in funding where they had been at about twenty five. I have an average number listed out here on the right. Um, so, you know, of course, that was an alarming, uh, discovery on my behalf. When we sat down with Lita and we discussed, or with the Economic Development Board, we discussed that. Um, Randy Cuddy was actually in here, he was able to kind of pull some strings for me. And I was able to talk to somebody, you know, at the state about what happened there. And they let us know that, um, they had notified everybody that there had been this change, but this happened right about the time that Gary was leaving. And so what I believe has happened was since that time, they actually, because of the table three, these were the allocations that went into it. So they did do a pretty good attempt of, um, capturing the six oh two fund that the state developed for this. They were capturing that plus the six forty five and dividing it by two. And so we come up with a number here, uh, based on, based on how it was done, how it was interpreted for the last twelve years. We came up with an, an overfunding to the Lita fund of fifty five thousand. The, we have not funded anything to Lita since about November of last year. And I'm gonna go into that here in a minute. Um, but, so you see on the table three how the figures just stopped right there. And that's because there hasn't been any allocations. And so, yes, we owe, based on that ordinance, we owe the twelve, the twelve, thirteen, fourteen-ish, um, for those several months, but we haven't paid those yet. So that's actually reducing what the, the fifty five number ended up being. Now, when I met with, um, the Economic Development Board today, we, they had come up with another, um, they had used my spreadsheet and they added another column to it. Um, same thing, we weren't having any issues up until that two thousand, or twenty twenty one, up until that time period. And then all of a sudden, um, according to their interpretation, they should get the full six oh two fund and half of the six forty five. So we started, again, deviating off of each other's figures for how that number should be figured. Keep in mind, table, table three is historical. That's what we did. Whether we updated or, which we didn't, we didn't update an ordinance when this happened. We didn't reinterpretate the or, ordinance. It wasn't ever brought to anybody's attention. It was whoever was figuring this number was just doing it. They just continued doing it, um, until November of last year. So I would assume it was Anthony that was probably doing these allocations. And then when he was gone, they stopped. So, um, and then Shannon had been given the spreadsheet and plus her heart, brought it to me and went, I don't know what to do with this. And I looked at it and I just strapped it and started, started from scratch. Because it was, it was too complicated, it was too convoluted. Um, and so what I did then was I went all the way back into our public record. And I searched every ordinance that had gross in the name, receipts, tax, gross, G R T, all these different searches. And I came up with this spreadsheet that I gave to y'all. So what I need to point out is that all the ordinances are listed in the top left-hand corner that we have that deal with gross receipts. So I did a column for the ordinance number, what date it was approved, what date it was effective, the rate as a fraction, percentage, decimal, the name of the ordinance and where the funds were dedicated. That's what those, those columns represent. Ordinance number two seventy has not been utilized. Our rate is, of a percentage is two point one two five. The number that we've been reporting to the state when they assess the taxes is one point eight seven five. So we are actually the point two five off of what the state is collecting. And so we need, I need to know about that ordinance specifically because the state is asking by the end of the month for me to update this. This is the tax table. I've looked back at all the ones I could find and they've never changed. So they just keep sending the same one in because we haven't had an ordinance since, since, um, two thousand and ten, which is this Lita ordinance. It's the newest one that deals with gross receipts. Um, the second, the second set of figures here is the combined by tax type. And so I'm showing that we have this municipal gross receipt tax. So it's one point five that comes from that fund. Infrastructure is point two five. And then whole harmless, which is the one that we pay our intercept payments from, uh, for the fire truck, for the ladder truck, that's point three seven five. Um, and then the final set of numbers on this was combined by fund type. And so that would be what goes to the general fund, what goes to streets, what goes to municipal infrastructure, which is kind of street. And then what goes to economic development, what goes to capital improvement fund. Uh, so keeping in mind that each one of these allocations, every time a gross receipt deposit comes in, an A C H deposit, it has to be split to these funds based on these ordinance. So that's why it got really complicated and really hard to do. And frankly, it got messed up. And then they tried to even make it harder because they were trying to allocate the admin fees, which come out before the distributions. And so it was a big mess. And so I've come to a point now where I needed to, um, you know, inform the commission and get some guidance on how those allocations need. some guidance on how those allocations need to happen. And then if we need to update our tax table, we only have this chance before next year to update it. My recommendation is we haven't been using ordinance 270 since 1978 and it would appear to the public like a tax increase because their, their tax would go from 7.25 to seven and a half on their returns. So it would appear like we snuck in a ordinance. It's actually there and actually I believe the state would take it if we sent it in. They would add it to our tax table. But we wouldn't be kind of skirting any sort of public, you know, letting the public know, all of that. And so I don't know that that's a good idea, but it needed to come to your attention. And then the other thing that I need to have some guidance on is how to interpret.
Can we just talk about this? I can address that one issue.
Okay.
Right now with the board. So you're saying that we've been shortchanging ourselves for many years because of the 270 and now we submit documents this month to request 7.5 instead of 7.25. We need to submit it now. What I'm saying is what's on the books, the ordinance has been passed, the ordinance has been approved by the board commission. I'd say that we move to the 7.5 because it's already been noticed to the public years back. Some, that's a counting error. It's been, it's been a benefit to the public for not paying that 2.5 for all these years. So, and it comes out of their retail businesses, that's pretty much where the GRTs come from, from the, according to the dollar or whatever it be. So it's kind of like, whatever they purchase is where the tax will be. It's not on their homes, it's not on anything like that. It's just the retail sale of the 7.5. And I feel that for auditing purposes too as well, I mean, if we're not charging what we're supposed to be charging, maybe not finding, even though it's, it's in, it's in our favor and in the favor of the thing. I mean, what's on the books, it's already been advertised, it's already been, everything's been done. We just haven't been doing it.
Well, what I will say is I noticed that in many, many cases, we allocated to the funds more than we took in. So the general fund was actually taking in less money than they were giving back out on many, many occasions. Now, I don't know, I think that could have been due to the fact that they were taking the distribution amount, the dispersion amount out of, you know, swap or something. There could be a lot of reasons, but.
Well, let me give you direction on that right now and I'll just get to that one specific item. Do we move forward on our next, because we have to turn that in by the end of the month? What are we reporting? I say it's 1.75 is what the ordinance state, for the books state, we need to, we need to capture that as a, as a community.
Yes. And I gave you a copy of that ordinance if you wanted to look at it.
And I'd say that if it's on the books, we need to, now just see how the votes goes on that one, giving recommendations on, on that or how they feel.
We did some really rough numbers, very rough numbers. And it could, it, it could increase our gross receipts revenue 50,000 per month.
So just so I understand, I'm going to throw it off this page here. At the bottom, you say we have a total of 2.125.
Uh huh. And what, you report to the state?
No, 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 let's just stay right there.
Okay.
Stay right there. Let's not jump off to, to that wagon just yet.
Okay.
Because in the state, it's got 5% on top of that and the county's got a half percent. Correct?
Uh, no, the, the county gets a quarter percent and the state gets 5.125 percent.
Okay. All right. Those were the, that's my misunderstanding there. So, okay, that's, that's how you get the seven and a half. Okay. So I'm good now.
Okay.
So it's like, that's not adding up.
Okay.
2.5 and you say the state has that 1.875?
Uh huh. The state has that 1.875.
Will they come back on us for that? Figure out that?
Uh, no. I, like you said, it's a benefit to the citizens. So I don't believe there would be any, they would have any problem with that. If it was the other way around, yes.
Yeah, we're introducing that ordinance to pass for taxing to be different, but it's already been through the, through the advertising, it's already gone through the process on the books. It's just that we have not captured it. Something's been accounted for. Where it was, wherever it stopped, stopped and it needs now to be brought. And that's why I appreciate you auditing everything from the ordinance all the way to the, to the last meeting on the books to this stuff. This is what's been the three years.
So because there wasn't any sort of action to be taken, you know, I didn't do a resolution or ordinance or anything. Like I said, I'm just, I'm looking for guidance for what to report to them.
Any guidelines? Well, not looking at it from the perspective of the implications of the change, but if that's what's been on the books and that's what our ordinance says, I don't think we would have to go through another process to make that adjustment. I think we just need to make some adjustments and figure out where that happened in accounting to not deal with the other 0.25 that we should have been, should have been utilizing.
And so then the other thing that I needed some guidance on deals with that LITA fund, the, the 602 fund that the state developed is probably around 17, $18,000. That's meant to replace the funding that came out of the 645 when they passed their legislature or legislative action. And so that just determines how we're going to allocate going forward, whether we need to update that ordinance. So that will be something that if we take action on, I'll have to bring back some sort of a, of an update. But right now it just says we're splitting the monies two ways, splitting between municipal infrastructure and the LITA fund. So, but there is a new tax. So we, actually the 602 tax is the one that the state came on board with. And so, you know, when I, when I was figuring these, these numbers, I took both lines, added them and then divided it in half. That's how I came up with my numbers. But like I said, the, the economic development was proposing that we only split the municipal infrastructure line, which is now $2,000. So that's only a thousand dollar split and they get the entire 602. But I will make the comment too, that that does away with the whole 0.25 to our municipal infrastructure fund. When we had set this up, we were splitting it between LITA and infrastructure and now we would basically be doing away with that.
I think Scotty and I were here, Commissioner Daniel, not in the group, was here, my back there, mayor at the time. We did that for infrastructure. We allocated only for infrastructure because we were trying to get some sort of revenue set aside for road construction.
Right.
Scotty's mayor, Michael Kim, gave a bench and we did do that, I remember. And that was really what it was allocated for. Now, EDC was divided along Eli for infrastructure, but he was.
Three eighths of that percent, half of it was for capital development programs, capital programs, and half of it went into general fund.
And then the general fund sent 25 out on average to LITA.
That's what it was usually, but yeah, the three eighths was divided up between general fund and the capital program.
Then the, the ordinance actually says local economic development and municipal infrastructure. So it names the two. So.
Yeah, because it's separated as well. And I know it's separate because I know we've asked that.
Uh huh. So, so basically the 645 fund has gone away. I mean, it's basically gone away. So I think we need to update our, our ordinance to, to address the fact that that's now gone and, you know.
We need, and that's, and you're correct. What we need to do is bring a 602 and for audit purposes too, we need to bring this 602 up as an ordinance and discuss on how we allocate that funding based on the new 602s.
Yes. Yeah, but that's the new, it's a new line item, it's not a new tax. The tax is still the same rate.
But we got to say that we're now pulling that money from the 602 to provide EDC and infrastructure, right?
It was the name, the numbers mean absolutely nothing.
Okay, 602 is total municipal receipt. That's what they call it on the state tax and rest site. So 645 is total municipal infrastructure and then starting in February 2021, they added the 602 total municipal receipt. So what they did was they transferred the figures that were showing up on line item 645, they moved them up to their own line to 602.
If you guys want to approach, I'll just.
We would love to.
Robin, if you want to move.
Here's the ordinance 496 for your, for you guys. We did have a meeting with David Montez from the state with Ms. Kennedy and Junior, who's president also. And he is the one that said to us that 602 was strictly EDC.
So, so what happened April 4th of 2019, the House Bill 579 passed, which de earmarked funds for municipality and camps. So by doing that, the state went in and on the 500, RP 500, they allocated the 602 fund. So they pulled the LITA fund out, out of grocery receipts first. That way, if a county or a city, since they are allowing now the de earmarking of funds, couldn't tap into a fund and then we wouldn't be running, right? So the state's at first position is if they have a LITA ordinance, we pull the 1/8 out of that. They gave us the 602. Now we don't have to have any fancy calculations or dividing the 545 plan out was done in the beginning. So that passed April 4th of 2019. Then COVID hit and they didn't get to implement their changes on their reports till, Tony, am I correct, February 2021?
Yes.
Yes. So Tony asked for guidance on how to retract LITA's fund out of the GRTs for that window of April 2019 to February 2021. So is there any questions on why the 602 fund was created? Okay, though, going to, Dixie Drummond was mayor and our board has the understanding that 496, ordinance number 496 is a LITA ordinance. So moving forward now that we have a 602 fund that they're retracting our 1/8 grocery seats from and, and putting it together, making it clean for us to capture what we, what our distributed amount is every month. We want to clarify that 496 is a LITA fund. It was not ever meant to provide the city with a 16th for infrastructure. It's a 16th and a 16th, which equals an eight. So we do want to address questions, concerns, comments on why we are thinking that this ordinance, half of it belongs to municipal infrastructure improvements on the city side. Part of the, part, I'll finish up with this, part of the HB 479 is that it actually restricts cities and counties from privately funding municipal infrastructure projects. And now it's requiring them, if you have a LITA program or if you have the LITA in place in your community, they actually want to be going through that for all projects. So it's kind of put up roadblocks and barriers and then it's actually giving us our money month to month. That way we don't have to worry about getting or capturing that information every month from the city, from city hall or the county or treasury department for the city.
And Junior, what I'm pointing out is, A is municipal infrastructure improvements, B is economic development. How, how as a board, how has your board separate the two to ensure that vote is being funded? I don't want to, and what I'm getting at is like, okay, let's say if you get it 100% and all of a sudden you're proposing the board and it's all just 100% economic development, economic development, but you're leaving out the infrastructure in three years down the line, we haven't even cut down this money for.
We're not, we have.
I'm just saying, because that was, that was the objective in the, in the beginning. So when we changed to the 602, how do we move that objective into 602 and clarify and ensure that since we did do that, that both are separated and votes are being allocated for funding that, that needs to be funded. I just don't want to, I understand economic development, but I don't want to just pump hundreds of thousands.
No, no, I got you. So in 2013, there was also, Robbie, you're welcome to chime in if I don't get this absolutely right. But in 2013, there were changes in the late, late session that opened up LITA funding for. Yeah, so, so they brought in our reach, right? And so it, now it's not just, so I think what you're saying is you want to be sure infrastructure has 16th and economic in development. But, but, yeah, well, now we have two or three other possibilities. That's how we were able to fund the theater to the Main Street Foundation, right? So that was a year that they introduced arts and cultural to EDC. So, so if, if we broke down every avenue, I, I don't know what that math, math would look like. I think as a board, we've been, we've done a great job in taking care of taxpayer money. We did a great job and, and we have, majority of our projects have been for what we would classify municipal infrastructure improvements. We did, you know, we did the, the funding for the subdivisions on cotton.
Yeah, the legislation and so.
Well, yeah, but it was more, you know, so what was it, what did, what did we give to builders?
Incidents, yeah. 3,000 dollar incidents from the.
We did McDonald's, we did the North Main project. So there's a lot of the money that we do with, that we spend is basically municipal infrastructure improvements. I just wanted to clarify, if we're getting clarification, if, I think as a board, we don't need to move forward in making a change to the ordinance because I think ordinance 496 was all for one LITA and I think it just got misinterpreted somewhere. And if we need to put in more language to clarify that, we sure can. We can move forward in the proper ways to do that, but as a board, we've always known that we pertain to 496 and the money's being received from the state for ordinance 496. And, and you know, I think, Tony, we were, the discussion, the discussion we had today on the phone was she wasn't, so she was, wasn't sure, possibly maybe trying to extract half of the 602 fund. And so we did, we met with David Montez last Monday at 2:30. He was in, and we had a meeting and we basically broke it down and Tony, if you remind me, so what was the sheet that he sends out every six months to audit our distributed amount? So there's a schedule that he sends out two times a year. Our distributed amount, so there's a schedule that he sends out, uh, two times a year.
Yeah, it's this tax table.
Okay.
Yeah, and so that's why, you know, they're asking for it by month end, um, because they, they break it out on the tax, tax table. And so, um, you know, and that's part of your.
Now only are we going to be able to capture monthly. Amounts, but we're going to be able to audit twice a year based on that.
So, av, on average, and I'll concede those across the bottom of table three and four. Uh, on average, you know, depending on where grocery seats go, it's about twenty five thousand. Is what we've been funding per month, back, all the way back to two thousand and ten. Uh, when I calculated doing it, um, the way the ordinance determines it, when I take the six oh two and the six forty five add them together, divide by, uh, two, I dropped down to about ten thousand per month um, in funding from the, you know, previous month was twenty one thousand, twenty two. So it cut it in about half. And then when, um, Rosie had done her own column where she just took the six oh two fund and left the six forty five alone, the six oh two fund went back up to eighteen, nineteen, twenty four, twenty five, twenty four, twenty seven, twenty six, twenty eight. So actually, we would stay at a more level funding to the leader account if we took the six forty five number out and just pulled from the six oh two, and the whole six oh two would then be dedicated to the leader, leader account.
And following our, our meeting last week, um, through the weekend, uh, Rosie and I worked on more of it, but we worked through it. And so we sent a message to David Montez with the tax and rev to just clarify that's what, what was left in that six forty five, because you have two six forty five funds, you have one that generally runs about, what, fifty thousand? And then the other one that's about sixteen to eighteen hundred. And so that, that fund is in question, but we're talking, um, the total swing of, uh, three point five, uh, three point five million that's been funded to leader. We, our books and, and Ms. Kennedy's books are showing a difference only of about fifty five either ways, fifty five thousand either way. So we're close, um, um, we, our, our books and per book are, are matching, everything's pretty well intact, we're just waiting on one last, um, answer from him.
Just for clarification, uh, during that meeting with David Montez, uh, he mentioned, David Montez mentioned that the six oh two was strictly leader. And when he said that, Junior reiterated, okay, are you saying that there's no calculation to be done, that strictly all calculated by the state? And he agreed to that, what we were trying to do is get confirmation from him before we came here to explain to you guys. And that's where I got my numbers from, is, you know, the six oh two and I added the six forty five. But, um, that would be the difference.
Yes, and furthermore, um, in researching that we did through leader partners throughout the state and other communities, uh, there's other communities that, that are capturing all of the six oh two fund plus have adopted another ordinance to give, um, X amount per month. So, um, David, if you wanted to set aside as a city or the city commission would like to see fifteen hundred, two thousand, ten thousand a month get set aside. If your concern is infrastructure and you want to, uh, want to move that money over to our leader, you, you could. But at minimum, it is a six oh two and possibly half of the six forty five.
Few questions? I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a minute here to jump in, I'm gonna get a little bit historical along with what Tony's already done. I'm not an expert from day one of leader that I've been involved with many, many years now. When this came about, first of all, I'm bringing one, the first thing, in section four, the dedication, somewhere along, it became that it was a sixteenth either way. That's not the way this reads, this reads that is you can use it for either one of these particular line items. It can be used for infrastructure and it can be used for economic development plans of projects. Okay, so it got convoluted that a sixteenth was going to be used either way, okay? I'm not advocating that that's right or wrong, that's just the way in, when they started dispersing funds, because they didn't start dispersing funds immediately in two thousand and ten, we let it ride for, that one was two or three years.
Three years.
Three years before we did any disbursements. On the sixteenth, I guess, or whatever, that we were receiving, that, actually, we weren't receiving it, they were allocated into a fund, okay? So somewhere along that line, somebody said, well, give it a sixteen each way. But I think that was inaccurate also. Because the Economic Development Corpora, or the, the Lovington EDC was charged with being the, uh, the guardian, that's, that's a good word for this, of these funds. Because it freed up the way the funds could be used. So actually, all of the funds would have gone through leader and could be dispersed for any of this. In, in addition to if the city had a request, as they have over the years, uh, they could say, we would like to use this amount for this project, okay? We, we've always agreed and, and I'm going to stand here because this has been my, since I've been on this board. These are city funds, this is not the Lovington EDC funds, uh, it's nothing along that line. It is funds that are, that were, when we voted this in, we're going to help uh, grow the city, contribute to the maintenance of the city and hopefully help us become a better community. It was not the Lovington EDC is going to get to advocate any way they want to, it's not, city's going to take all the money and do it either way. So we can say here, sit here and say it's, it needs to go a sixteenth here, a sixteenth here, or whatever. Really, all of this money is going to be used for, for, uh, for Lovington and it's, it's a progressive movement forward. I think, this is my opinion, I'm now jumping both sides, because here in another month, I'm going to be up there listening to this and I'm also going to have a lot of knowledge on this, or on this side. I think we need to all come together again and say, okay, we're, we're going to take these funds, we're going to set them aside as, we're going to put a fund. And I don't know if it's going to be six oh two or a combination or whatever, because I wasn't in either one of those meetings. So I'm not going to say it, it's any, any one of those, but I think we need to come in as a group, come to say, all right, this is the amount of money that this tax that was, that we all agreed in, uh, is coming into a fund. And then we're going, we can come up with our percentages, and, and both of these have advocated to this point. Set aside this amount that is going to be specifically for, and, and not spoken many times up to this point, we've got to be prepared to move into the future anyway, so this will be a step. A portion of it is going to go for roads, sewer, water, whatever. A portion of it is going to be used for whatever else we want to look forward that falls within this. And we may want to amend this ordinance to include some things that weren't at that point. All the state EDC, or excuse me, not EDC, but the, the state leaders, when they started out, it, they had a, a small number of things that it could be used for. Obviously, these were two of the lineup. Since then, they've included several things, as Junior said, uh, arts, uh, retail, things that were not on the radar when this was passed. I think those are some things that would help our community also realize, hey, at least there's some money going towards arts and whatever else we want to put on. We as the EDC board stayed out of the retail because how do we give to some new retail project when our existing retailers didn't receive anything, whatever? So we as a board said, we're not going to touch retail. We're not going to, we, we will encourage them, uh, if they have an infrastructure plan or something, which is, a lot of what we do is under infrastructure, then we would possibly attempt to help them or whatever, but as far as, uh, we just felt like we shouldn't be getting into that industry. So there's a lot of things, I think it's going to have to be a, okay, we, we got to sit down and come up with, this is the way this funding is distributed. Now that's, again, I, I stated, that's my opinion. But I do want to address that so far, I don't think any one of us has actually put together what really happened from night, from two thousand and ten to two thousand and thirteen or fourteen, thirteen, when we started, uh, actually using this fund. I don't think it's actually followed, I'm not going to say it didn't follow the intent of the ordinance, but I don't think it actually followed the ordinance. So this ordinance probably needs to be amended.
So what I did, what I was tasked with doing was just odd, and one half. And that's what I did on, um, table three. But to point out, if we had been using the entire dedication, that's in table two. So that would be, those would be the numbers as opposed to table three or four. Um, so instead of, instead of, um, we'll go back to two thousand and ten, uh, let's go to eleven, twelve. So instead of six hundred and forty three thousand, or instead of three hundred and twenty one thousand, we would have funded six hundred and forty three thousand. If we had not been splitting it out between the two funds, because the, the leader fund is, um, in the control of the EDC board, but the municipal infrastructure fund that this has been going to all these years is in control of the city. Um, so yes, to, to address what Robbie said, and I appreciated that when he mentioned it in the other meeting, was, you know, this is still, this is not city money and leader money. Um, but to point that out, if we, you know, had made a change, you can see how much additional monies we would have been funding to leader. And then, you know, I don't know, I, that, that's something to talk about here in a minute. I don't know exactly what the municipal infrastructure funding has been used for since two thousand and ten. Our, our one sixteenth of a percent, I don't know that yet, I didn't audit that, I just audited this. And, and so, um, you know, I was just trying to, for cash flow reasons, um, the recommendation on my behalf would be to, to maintain where we at, where we're at. The leader fund has, you know, a pretty substantial balance in it. We still need to look at the expenses and I'm not going to go into that just yet. But, um, you know, there still could be some, some other changes to this number, but, but on the revenue side right now, you know, I don't, I, and like I said, I wasn't here, I can't interpret that. I just did it, I did not even interpret it, I did it how it was, how everybody else has interpreted it from the time it was acted till it was passed. So apparently that was the, that was the calculation they were told to use, was to take the, the fund divided and half.
And I recommend the board look into the H four seventy nine or five seventy nine, whatever, or seventy nine. But they did talk about, so I, I read the bill that was proposed and the, the amendments and the corrections and the add-ons and then the bill that passed. And it kind of, uh, opened up some ways to, you know, I, I, I don't know how the city operates, really don't care to find out, but. So if you got different ones, your de earmarking funds allows you to maybe maneuver from fund to fund. I, I, we read, it was hundred and seventy nine pages, we were trying to thumb through it, pick up the hotspots, what pertained to us, but, um, you know, as she said, there's money sitting in the infrastructure fund.
And, and he said, this isn't fun, like, it's except from Santa Bay community, and you have such money, let's take that.
That's taxpayer for Santa.
The reason Evelyn went to, uh, Ms. Kennedy is because we didn't know what the balances was on our, um, leader fund and we needed to know, so whenever we got any projects, we could figure out a sentence. Right now, we're at a standstill. Uh, all along, EDC has relied on the city of Lovington to provide that information. And now we've been enlightened and we know where to get that information. So now it's a matter of making things right and moving forward. And we want to work with everyone because we're part of this community, we want to make it a good community, like Robbie said. So I think we're at a good, um, point and I think we're going to do good and it, I think we're going to come to an understanding, so we appreciate your time.
Yeah, and how, how to that is that, so Robbie made a comment sort of junior about some new additions to the leader. So that needs to be in, in, inputted in the new ordinance now. I'd recommend to do it with an ordinance and whatever changes we're going to make on our books and ordinance. And get it all done at once, either two separate ordinance or one, but for audit purposes, we have to do it anyway, because this change has already been in place for ten months and we haven't, uh, made an ordinance.
So I, I will have time to do an ordinance for next month's meeting. Um, and then it can go to the state by the end of the month.
So if I, if I understand everybody right, this is going to be an ordinance created to give above and beyond what the leader app says. But, well, so they have to do, so they have to do, the, the scenario that I mentioned was when I reached out to other communities, they're getting the six oh two and then other communities are saying, we'll give you two thousand extra, three thousand extra, ten thousand extra for infrastructure. Is that what you guys are wanting to move forward with? Or, or you want line items of what is available through the leader now?
I think that's the, the terminology, I think they're.
That's what I'm saying, is, is, um, yeah, it was, it's real broad, right? So I think we stick with this ordinance and we update the ordinance.
Yeah, and I, and I believe that any ordinance that we do needs to be non-inter, you know, there can be just, just a different misinterpretations of it, because, you know, I came in, read the ordinance and I said, oh, half goes here and half goes here. Um, and that's how it had been done, and so then, you know, I walk out tonight, get hit by a bus. Take me home, Lord. Somebody's going to have to know to come in and take over these calculations from me and not have to go back and do this work, go all the way back to two thousand and ten. There's not a lot that can be done with that, and that's something that I discussed with, with Dr. Martinez. You know, that's, there's, there's a lot of stuff and we're fixing to go over some more of it that we can't address by moving money around. It's, it's done and we don't have the extra funds to say, oh, we, we need to make it up to you because we misinterpreted the ordinance. You know, that's the point I'm trying to make between table two and table three, it, it's just not possible, but how are we going to go forward? Are we going to just use the average number, which is, is even still, without having to do a complicated calculation, the state did it for us, basically, they took the six oh two out, we could give the whole six oh two to the leader fund and they still maintain an average of about twenty five thousand funding per month, just like they always have from us. Now, yes, I understand we have the municipal infrastructure issue, but as you can tell, we're scrambling for money for municipal infrastructure projects. And now that we've got Dr. Martinez here, he's going to make proactive effort finding us money instead of us just like scrapping it together.
And then we allocate that new money, we can say, throw this to them.
Yes, and so, yes, we, you know, and that, and that's where we need to bring in the leader board and say, okay. okay, well, where's our money that's spent on municipal infrastructure? And let y'all have a, have a word in it, in that way. Because y'all, I mean, historically, you haven't had any word over the 25,000 that we've been keeping in the municipal infrastructure fund. Like I said, I don't know where that's gone. I, I could go back and audit it, but it's another one of those things, it's my kind of well spent going all the way back and auditing something like that. Uh, the only reason I felt it was really important for LITA is because it's, it's almost like money leaving, not that it's leaving the community, but it's money leaving the city. It's an expense to us, it's money that we don't use for other things. Um, and so, you know, that's, that's gonna be my responsibility is to, to control the money that's kept within the city budget.
And as an EDC board, um, even though you've enlightened us that it's being split, even, not even knowing that, we've always been diligent about helping the city and doing with the money that we have municipal improvements. They, you guys have come to us, we've gone ahead and approved them. What is it, 150,000? Yes, always recommended by us because we're the guardians, you guys have to approve it and write the check. So we're always trying to work with you guys and be diligent with that money. And you guys are the final say, so.
And also at a federal level, so after talking to one of the community partner, partners of LITA, one of our neighboring communities, um, during 2020 COVID, he was able to knock a grand slam with a 1.5 million dollar grant handed down from the feds because no one from this area applied for it. So everybody was at home scared, running for their lives, and he applied for it. And a piper wasn't even that, he was granted all of it because there was.
It was shovel, what it was, it was shovel ready. If you had a shovel-ready project, you received that grant. We as a municipality didn't have a shovel.
No.
That's why, because we did look into it, it was a shovel-ready project.
No, it, no, it wasn't because.
Yes, it was, I'm telling you, it was.
It was for their industrial work.
Yeah, it was a shovel-ready project, meaning that they had all the paperwork and guidelines, they're ready as a shovel-ready project. We didn't have a shovel-ready project because we looked for one.
And that's the same, that's the same grant that you're looking at as, as the, as the. Everyone, what is the? Anyway, it's the federal level, EDC.
Yeah.
And, and so, so, you know, we're gonna be proactive, where I was going with this is we're gonna be proactive along with you, uh, Dr. Martinez, to help you out in especially ways like that, right? We're gonna, uh, we're sure gonna pursue any money like that. Shovel-ready or not, it's, uh, we know this community needs it. And uh, we did a great job to set some money back and, and, and make some things happen. So again, we appreciate you guys' time.
And I think we just need to get together, I mean, you know. And find, do you need to come back to the board to clarify?
Um, all right, I'm gonna move on. Um, I'm gonna skip over, you know, I, I had put here for like a future projection about the grocery receipts tax, skip over that. Um, just keep in mind that table one is the funding, all the way back to 2010, so. Um, the next thing I wanted to discuss, I, I touched on it a couple of times during this, is the deposit allocation. Um, so this is one of the things that I, that I finally started to uncover as an issue was we have been expensing everything out well, we spend money well. Um, we've got the expense report that y'all see every month. Um, the deposits had not been captured. The girls were never showed how to reconcile accounts, they, they were never given that task. Um, so when that, you know, person went away, they didn't know to do it. So as they're reconciling accounts, you know, it's still happening, that's still gotta happen before the audit can be completed. Um, that still has to happen before I can do a whole lot, and I'm gonna go into some of them. The reconciling the accounts means balancing to the checking account. We show a lot less money than the checking account shows because the checking account has deposits that we don't, we have it put in our system. Lot of those deposits come in through ACH, so automated clearinghouse comes, you know, basically a wire or something into the fund. We're, we're capturing some, but not all. And so if they collect checks for the water department and they go make a deposit, obviously we put those deposits into our system. The deposit that have created such a problem, why we cannot reconcile our accounts is we have five merchant service vendors. They all have different cutoff times in the evenings. They all have a different weekend cutoff time policy. We have MBD using it, we have the water department, we have all these, all these different merchant services. Those deposits are not reconciling to the bank accounts because the bank gets deposited at a certain time. And the difference is what got deposited the day before and the day after, or even a Thursday afternoon versus a Monday, it's all very complicated. That's why we cannot, that's why we cannot balance the accounts, we cannot reconcile. And it's a lot of work because it hadn't been kept up on. My plan going forward is to get the merchant services all to come, you know, wine and dine us and, and make their play about why we should use them. A big thing is gonna be fees, obviously, but a bigger thing, a bigger consideration needs to be how easily we can capture those deposits correctly, how they're hitting our bank account. So that we're able to reconcile, this is what's taking the girls so long, it's just that one thing. But it's a big thing because until that, that account balances penny for penny, you can't move on to the next month. So they are stuck right now in August, and that's the first month that they have taken on to do. They're still stuck on it. Um, and so when we have these big deposits coming in, what I wanna do is I want to be able to tell the girls, okay, I want a deposit um, a report every morning from the bank. What hit the bank account yesterday? That's checks, that's ACHs, that's all these different ways. Those then need to be captured, and they're all different allocations. So we just talked about one of about seven allocations that have to take place every single month when our grocery receipts come in. That hasn't been happening. So what's happened is we're shorting our funds by those deposits. We're not funding any of our funds right now. So they're all going way down in, in, they have, everybody has a claim on cash figure. That number is dropping every month, the expenses are going up, they're, they're continuing to spend money, but they're not getting in deposits. So I'm afraid what happens is when we get all of our deposits and we get reconciled, we start putting the money into the funds where they need to go. Have we overspent now? Because our budget looks good, because we haven't, we've, our, our budget looks bad because we have over-expensed a lot of our revenue type funds. But when I do these, do twos, and I determine, hey, we owe this much to LITA, we owe this much to this fund, this much to this fund, this much to this fund, do we have enough in the account to cover what we owe to all of our funds? I need to come up with that number, and that's why I've told, uh, you know, city manager that I need some time to start spending money that when it all comes due, is it gonna be in that account at the very top? This has been a systemic problem that we've had because there's been way too much money moving within these funds without um, notification to you or whatever's happened. You know, I feel like there's been a lot, a lot, a lot of inaccurate data that's been recorded. Um, and so that's, I believe, how we've kinda come to this place. Not only that, but it's been eight, nine months since, since this has been kept up on because there hasn't been a financial person that's, you know, and bless Anthony's heart. Um, you know, I, I think he just didn't know what to do with all of it. Um, we've got plans in place to try to address it, you know. I've had lots of meetings with the city manager, what needs to happen in what order? Um, and so we just felt like it was time to go ahead and tell y'all what I'm looking at, what I'm kind of up against. Um, so we have, we have that issue, um, you know, and this, this is on every fund level, every single fund level, I need to look at this, we've got 700 funds.
And I think a good thing is that they use a pool account.
Yes.
Pulled it off the pool account instead of allocating all the funds where it's supposed to be allocated. They just had one pool of money and everybody pooled from the pool of money.
Yes.
That's how they were offering a fine.
So by doing it that way, there was no sense in even having a budget. We were just reporting to the state just to report, the budget wasn't being followed. That's why we're having to start from scratch this year with the budget, because these are not good numbers. Um, in a lot of cases, they're not good numbers. We, you know, the managers um, were not privy to the fact that money was, was being pulled from their accounts for, for certain things. Uh, same thing happened with the LITA fund. And so I do have to sit down with them and go over the expenses that came out of that fund and look at ours versus what they have it accounted for and decide if we expensed out of their fund that we shouldn't have. And so that may change this number, this 55 that right now we're showing they owe us. When we do the expenses, it may swap the other way. And, you know, and that'll be, again, I'll bring the information to you and I have a figure to say we need to make a decision about this. Um, but example, we had a luggage tax meeting last month, or last week. Um, they asked for the same thing, they wanted a fund audit. It's very, very difficult for me to, to tell you a number and be sure that's a correct number. Um, but we had to do an allocation for the quarter, and we decided on 35,000, and there's about 75 in that fund, according to the paperwork. Um, you know, same thing with Crystal, the, the question you asked earlier about hers. That money is supposedly sitting in a fund, but has it actually been? Is it actually like under lock and key and it can't be taken from? No, it's absolutely not. The pooled account allows a lot of um, liquidity within the account. You know, we, I, I just, we just closed on Friday on, on the debt for the magistrate court and the Lee County State Bank refinance, same thing. Uh, I have asked Brad to get me documents for those, those loans, for all of our loans, because I don't have any documents. I have one, I have one set of documents. So I tried to put together a debt schedule for you, and I can't even do that because I don't know what the original balance was, what the original rates were to term uses. I, I don't know any of that without having those documents. Um, the DFA report is, this is one way that I have found out all of this stuff. As I'm trying to do the DFA report, and I'm trying to do it correctly without just adding numbers, I'm running into this. And even Michael, the, you know, he's the person with the state, he, he and I are both just absolutely banging our head against the wall because we cannot figure out how to not only, I mean, nobody does a DFA report based on unreconciled accounts, for one thing. And for two, we have all these transfers that are happening internally, and then they weren't being reported that way. We also weren't doing bars, we were not reporting to the state when we had a budget adjustment like we were supposed to be doing. There are funds that cannot be moved to other funds that we were doing. And all of this stuff, you know, has to be corrected, it can't take place or we, we, you know, risk losing, um, you know, funds for, for certain specific accounts that can only be eligibility used for this expense or that expense. Um, and so there's just a lot of that. Um, I talked about the audit, the account reconciliation, talked about the merchant services. So, you know, like I said, just to give you a high level, you know, this is, like I said, a lot of inaccurate data has been reported. Um, our income statement is, is not accurate today because we don't have the revenues, but we do have the expenses. Our balance sheet is not accurate because there hasn't been a fixed asset inventory done in I don't know how long. Um, Ed Fiero, the CPA is, is trying to, he's got a separate spreadsheet where he's trying to reconcile cash balances, there hasn't been a petty cash audit ever done. Um, we're still finding drawers of money in the vault back here, we don't know where it goes. Um, you know, we, we have a fund, um, the wastewater treatment plant fund that had 300,000 on 6/30/21, and on 12/31/21, it had no money in it. But there is no transaction for where that money went during that time. The CPA is working on that, was trying to find it. I'm probably gonna have to bring Tyler, the, our software manager, into that to find out how money leaves the fund with no transaction, no trace of it. Um, I believe that that was a CD that was at Western Commerce, and it got hacked out a long time ago. And maybe they just found that the money was still showing, that it was sitting in the account and, or in this fund, so they pulled it out of there and cleared that fund out and made it inactive. But um, I only found that because on the DFA report, I was doing beginning and ending cash, and I was off by 300,000. So there's all these things that, you know, we're starting to discover. And I, I, you know, I hate to kinda make y'all drink from a fire hose, but um, you know, I hope you can understand now and appreciate the, my reluctance in giving any figures that I cannot back up personally because I spent hours and hours on this LITA project. And I believe everything needs to be looked at with that sort of accuracy because of the sort of things that I uncover. Um, and so I'm gonna ask for patience, and it's a huge undertaking, but I believe that the city manager, you know, I believe he has my back. And we are both committed to fixing it, and we just, we just are gonna need some time and um, you know, kind of just to pull in a little bit and do our best to, to try to conserve expenses and stuff until we can get a good handle on this. And then I think going forward, um, we have a good budget, we have good data by next year, and the budget process will be a lot easier next year. So that's, that's where I'm coming from.
I appreciate it, and I, I know the board appreciates, appreciates it, just like we talked about audit, audit, audit. Until we get the right number, that's what the board has been asking for for quite some time. We want a good, solid number to go by, and that's, we really appreciate it. First, we really appreciate what you've done and the time you've spent. And uh, so I'll walk in your office and thank you all the time, just don't leave, just don't leave us. But I really, I personally appreciate it.
So going forward, um, you know, my financial report will still consist of specific findings until the time that I can actually put together a good, simple to understand, you know, revenues minus expenses and that sort of stuff that you're used to seeing. Um, but I, I feel like a lot of those that you received before were not accurate. And that, that comes from, um, you know, Gandy has brought me some worksheets and, and Bo has brought some worksheets, and they don't, they don't match the grocery receipts even. Um, I've got four and five versions of the same month that, you know, and I did show that to the city manager, so.
Let's talk to Bo.
No further questions, questions, roll call, yeah.
Yes.
Please reply?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Can I play with our pay? Do I have a bottom motion?
I'd like a motion too.
Positing a safe action, Gandy's the same in fact.
Yes.